Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 21st, 2024 Grants Pass City Council meeting. We start our meetings with a moment of silence, so please join us for that. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a busy agenda tonight. I'm going to make a couple announcements because I'm making a change to the Agenda Item 2A, having to do with regulation of humanitarian service events and publicly owned property. I'm going to put after 2C, which is the public funding, Public Safety Funding Discussion. Going to combine the comments for Items 2B and 2C regarding public safety funding. That's the food and beverage tax and the public safety utility fee. We're going to combine comments and do two minutes per person. So if any of you have timed your comments down to the minute, please shave a minute off. We're going to get started tonight with a couple of recognition awards. And first up, we have an award for the Chair of our Historic Building and Sites Commission, Ward Warren. And the HBSC is presenting him with a Lifetime Achievement Award. And Arden, are you making our presentation? Arden McConnell is a member of the HBSC.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm happy to be here tonight. This is an exciting night. So I wrote down what I'm going to say because I didn't want to miss anything, but it won't be long. So first, I was born and raised in Grants Pass, grew up in Midtown. And that was virtually our playground downtown. It was wonderful for growing up for children. And my husband and I moved, moved away for careers. He was a professional baseball player and I owned an advertising agency. So we retired and returned to the hometown in the mid-'90s. It was shocking and staggering to see how many of the beautiful, old, familiar buildings were actually gone. And then during that time, we kept hearing the name, some guy named Ward Warren, who had volunteered to try to save the downtown from ODOT. So at that time, ODOT was planning to turn Sixth Street into a freeway and wipe out the city's historic footprint and significant character. It took five years to save the downtown and negotiate a successful alternative plan for the benefit of the city and of ODOT. It was such an important event for Southern Oregon that public broadcasting did a documentary of it. So I was happy to have an opportunity to help preserve the integrity of the history of my hometown by volunteering for the city's Historic Building and Sites Commission for several years and have served as former Chair and now Vice Chair. So it was there that I saw firsthand how dedicated Mr. Warren was to protect the integrity of a now very successful, genuine, and thriving historic district and continues to safeguard what's left of the city's significant areas. For those many years of dedication to Grants Pass and preserving the historic district, Mr. Ward Warren is most deserving of the recognition award the city is presenting tonight. So thank you, thank you, thank you, all of you, for this wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward.
Thank you, Arden. And I've had a lot of practice up at this microphone trying to keep my comments under three minutes. And I'm not always successful before the buzzer goes off, but I'll do my best tonight. I did manage, in an amazing feat of summarizing, to put 35 years of volunteering on this little index card. So that's all I'm going to use. I don't have a prepared speech. But, you know, the memory does start to slip a little bit. And so 35 years is a long time. Somebody asked me, so I think the reporter, and I want to thank the Courier, they did a very nice article in the Courier today about this. And the reporter asked me, so, like, what was your reaction when, when they announced this to you in the Historic Building and Sites Commission meeting last month? And I said, you know, it was overwhelming, really. I'm just not really used to getting that kind of recognition. And then when I thought about it and it's Lifetime Achievement Award, honestly, what I really felt was old. It's like a Lifetime Achievement Award, you know? It takes a while to get one of those. People have asked me, you know, has it really been worth volunteering 35 years of your life for this? And I say emphatically, yes, it has. So it hasn't always been smooth sailing, that's for sure. And it's definitely been a challenge, but it's, it's all about, I think, having a passion and feeling that you're doing something right and you're doing something worthwhile. And that's kept me going. And just seeing the things that have happened and the changes that have been made is very satisfying. So just briefly, I, you know, I want to say to people that aren't aware of it that downtown has been the hub of economic, social, and cultural activity for almost 150 years, a long time. When I opened my business downtown on Sixth Street in the 1980s, downtown was looking pretty tired and shabby. It was not vital. It had lost its vitality. But, you know, it's been through two world wars, a number of other wars, the Great Depression, a bunch of recessions, and COVID. And it survived all of that. And that's saying something. Many downtowns disappeared a long time ago. And I know there's some business owners out here tonight that will tell you that they hear daily when people come in about how the town they used to live in had a downtown like ours, and it went away a long time ago. We're very lucky to still have the downtown that we do. And so in the 1980s, basically, I got kind of dragged in without knowing what was going on into this situation where ODOT, because they own Sixth Street and Seventh Street, wanted to do a major redo. And it would have meant a certain destruction of our historic downtown area as we know it. And so that was my introduction, and I kind of got hooked. And I, I decided that downtown was really important, so I redid my building and restored it. Most of the buildings on Sixth Street had been covered up with siding and painted over and looked pretty, pretty bad. And that caught on, and other building owners started doing it. And all of a sudden, there was this pride in downtown and this synergy that happened between the building owners, the business owners, and then the businesses moving in to downtown. And everybody was proud of the downtown. Everybody worked together to make it bigger and better. And, you know, our business owners downtown and building owners deserve a lot of credit for the work that they do to serve you all every day. And, you know, tourists feel as much at home in our downtown as locals do. And I think that says a lot. So basically, I would like to thank the other members of the Historic Building and Sites Commission. Arden is one who's been on it for a long time. I don't know if the others are here. If you are, would you please stand up if you're here from the Historic Building and Sites Commission? Anyone? There's a couple back there, a couple of our members. Thank you for being here tonight, Terry and Danielle. I also want to thank the public for their support over the many years, as well as the many councilors and staff that have supported downtown over the years. Because this wouldn't have happened without that kind of support. And our historic district is now five times bigger than our original district, which was formed in the early '90s. And we, the Historic Commission, we passed a demolition ordinance because over the years we lost a lot of very beautiful vintage buildings that, if you look at old photographs on Facebook, there's a couple of groups that have photographs. And if you see some of those old pictures, you see what we've lost. Hopefully, the demolition ordinance is in place to slow that process down. And so we've had a lot of good changes. You know, our parks are important. We have 18 city parks. We only have one downtown. So, and it's real. It's authentic. It's authentic Grants Pass. It's not some made-up theme park. It's not some cookie cutter downtown like you see as you drive down I-5. And it's, it's the heart and soul of our city. So I would hope that everyone would continue to preserve it, protect it, and support it. And thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ward, for your work over the past 30-plus years. I realized I missed my cue here. I was supposed to read this first. But we want to thank you for your, for your 30-plus years of service here and all the work you've done in support of local history, as well as protecting our downtown, which is, as you said, one of the greatest downtowns in Oregon. Ward has been the Chair of the Historic Building and Sites Commission since 2017, and prior to that, he's been a longtime member. He also served on several other citizen committees over the years, including Chair of the 2022 Central Business District Vitalization Committee and Downtown Parking Task Force. A recent project that he did, he owns the building at Sixth and E Street that has the large Greetings mural, Greetings from Grants Pass, Oregon, that looks like an old-fashioned postcard that he had painted on the building. He worked closely for many months with the local artist to conceive and design the mural on his building, which is quickly becoming a must-see piece of public art in downtown Grants Pass. And we have a lovely plaque here for you that has a picture of the mural on the, on the top of it. During Ward's time as Chair, a couple of his major accomplishments with the HBSC is developing guidelines for renovations and remodels and new builds and signage that give clear and simple direction for historic buildings. He has expanded the downtown historic district, making it five times larger than the original district, updated the local landmarks list, and added several properties to the listing, guided the restoration of the historic Redwood Empire sign, and prompted a community celebration upon its relighting, and implemented a historical architecture district in the northwest residential neighborhoods that helped maintain their historic character. Thank you so much, Ward, for, for all your work. I really appreciate all you've done. And I'm going to pass this to you. I really love that mural. It's, it's a great addition. Next up on tonight's agenda, we have Battalion Chief Delisle here to present a word on behalf of our Grants Pass Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilors. Tonight, it's my honor to get to honor a fellow firefighter that I've known for many years and whose actions exemplify what we expect from the fire service. On August 15th, 2023, the Grants Pass 911 Center received multiple calls about smoke coming possibly from a structure fire in the 1800 block of Candler Avenue. As they dispatched out units to respond to the area, off-duty Medford firefighter Manny Sharp, who lives in the area, also saw the smoke and decided to respond to investigate on his own and see if he could help. As he got to the address, the house on fire, 1835 Northwest Candler, he saw that the garage is on fire and that fire was beginning to spread into the house. Neighbors told him at that time that they believed there were some people still in the residence, unable to get out. So Manny, with disregard to his own safety, approached the house and, wearing nothing but shorts, a T-shirt, and flip-flops, kicked the door in. He entered the living room where he found two minors sleeping on the couch, unaware that the room was already filling with smoke. He quickly got those children out of the house, and as he got to the front yard, he ran into the parents returning from running errands. They then informed him that a third child was missing and was probably in his bedroom still asleep. So Manny again entered the house on his own. Fire and smoke conditions were deteriorating rapidly. He was able to get into the bedroom and remove the third person out the window. At about the time he got outside, fire units from Grants Pass Fire Rescue and Rural Metro Fire Department were responding, were pulling up on scene. He then proceeded to go over, and being the fact that we know Manny very well, he used to be a student of ours, he began to assist fire crews by pulling hoses from the trucks and hooking up to the fire hydrant. Fortunately for us, the fire conditions that day were pretty bad, but we had extra staffing onboard. We had a training going on with our technical rescue teams. We had seven extra bodies there at that time, plus we called back a severity staffing when the weather is going to be bad, hot and windy, as it was. As we arrived on scene, we saw fire in the garage of the main house spreading into the house itself. It had also crossed the space between the houses and caught the neighbor's house on fire. We also determined because of the fire conditions that day and the wind, that three other residences were in immediate danger from fire spread. Manny's actions allowed us, instead of having to do a search and rescue and take a lot of our resources inside, we were able to concentrate and do a quick knockdown and attack the fire directly. At that point, we were able to extinguish the fire quickly and eliminated the spread. It's his actions that, again, exemplify the fire service, that selflessness even on or off duty. And when you talk to Manny, he feels that he did nothing out of the ordinary, when most of us understand the magnitude of what he did. But he just followed his training. So as you can tell, we're all very proud of Manny. We have many Medford firefighters here who he works now. And outside, unfortunately, well, I guess they had been able to come in, many of the Grants Pass firefighters here, just to honor his, what he did for the family. So I'm going to bring up Deputy Chief Joe Hyatt and Manny Sharp, the man himself, to come on up. So Manny, this certificate of appreciation and recognition of your lifesaving performance, removing three juveniles from a structure fire on August 15th, 2023, located on Chandler Avenue. Without your efforts, the outcome of these children would have been very different. Your willingness to selflessly risk yourself for others and truly display heroism in all in flip-flops. Thank you very much, Manny.
Thank you, Manny, and thank you to the Grants Pass Fire Department for recognizing this outstanding citizen and fellow firefighter, who is both from Grants Pass and Medford. And I think public safety funding, you know, and, and public safety here in Grants Pass is going to be a major part of our discussion tonight. We're expecting to be here for several hours. I know that many of you were just here for Manning and are ready to slip out the back, but you're all appreciated and very much a reminder of what we're talking about here tonight and why it's important. So thank you. I'm going to allow a brief, brief pause for those of you who want to leave, to leave and let other people who are waiting outside to come in. But thank you to Manny and all the firefighters for doing what you do. All right, I know there are a number of people who have been waiting outside. We do have some seats available inside if anybody would like to come back into the room. We have two public hearings on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to get started with those. We still have some shuffling in the back. Just a note for everybody, we do have Councilor Pell and Younger are online on the phone tonight. At this time, I will open the public hearing to consider an application authorizing the city manager to approve a special use permit for OnTrack, Inc., to operate an emergency lodging and outpatient clinic facility to be located at 688 and 690 Rogue River Highway. This application, we will begin the hearing with a staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of the application, statements by persons in opposition to the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed, and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Do any councilors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Are there any councilors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other ex parte information they have received prior to this meeting regarding the application? In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the Development Code. All testimony which apply in this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of the report, please write that on a note to the city manager, and one will be provided. It is important to remember, if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a report from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Brad Clark with Community Development. We do have the applicant here tonight, and we'll add some information after the brief staff overview. OnTrack, you are familiar with them. OnTrack is a nonprofit organization here in, in Grants Pass, as well as in Jackson County, providing services. And they are proposing a emergency lodging and outpatient clinic facility on Rogue River Highway. This is the, the three lots that we're referring to tonight. Rogue River Highway is, is just to the south of the property. There's three tax lots. Maple Lane runs along the east side. So basically, we're talking about this area, this block between Highway 199 and Rogue River Highway, right there on the corner. 688 and 690 are the current addresses. Here's an aerial showing the property. Here are a couple of street-level photos. I'm sure you recognize the properties. The one on the top is taken from Rogue River Highway. The one on the bottom is taken from Maple Lane. This house that is there currently today is proposed to be demolished, and then they would make the bottom area a parking lot. So in February, you approved a grant, the DAS Grant II, OnTrack, to $890,000. In November, OnTrack had a pre-application conference to open and operate a six-bed and a 10-bed emergency lodging for individuals seeking treatment, as well as those currently waitlisted for residential treatment. Then in January 24, we received a special use permit application. In Grants Pass, you have to have a special use permit application to operate supportive housing. And if you're on Rogue River Highway and you're looking at the two houses, or the two buildings, the one on the left is proposed to be the, the one for 24/7 residential care. The one on the right would be the outpatient. So our code requires that a special use permit be approved by the council before this type of use is allowed to proceed. The building on the left that I refer to is proposed to, to house the 16 beds. Supportive Housing is what it's called, and here's the definition. I won't read that. That was there for you. But basically, it's a type of transitional housing. Here's the site plan that was submitted with the application. Again, Rogue River Highway on the left, Maple Lane on the bottom here. The two buildings would be retained, the front on Rogue River Highway, and then, as I mentioned, they would demolish the house that's on Maple Lane, put in a, a parking lot, and then fence the property. So one of the things that's required for a transitional housing product like this, use like this, is to submit how the property will be managed and maintained and operated. Those, those three documents that are listed there on the screen were, are in your packet, page 29 to 38. And that gives you a lot more detail in terms of exactly how OnTrack proposes to manage the property, intake property, or intake potential residents, review them, and then what your behavioral guidelines are once they're there on site. So in order to approve the application, the city council has six different criteria that you have to meet in order to approve it. Those are listed there. That first one I just mentioned, the Development and Operation Plan, was one of, that got a lot of discussion a couple of years ago when you were talking about homeless shelters and transitional shelters. So there's also information about the operator certification and what their education is and what their, what their background is in terms of operating such a facility. That's also in your packet. And then there's other information there that was submitted with the application. We did review that information, and staff found that they were satisfied. So your call to action is, is tonight. You can approve the request as submitted or make modifications once you review it and hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Brad. Council, do you have any questions for Brad? No questions? All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this application?
I'm sorry, maybe we were going to have the applicant.
Oh, sorry, the applicant. I'm going to assume you're here to speak on behalf of the application, Justin. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and staff. Justin Gerlitz, Gerlitz Engineering Consultants, here tonight on behalf of the applicant, OnTrack, for the OnTrack Emergency Lodging and Outpatient Clinic Special Use Permit. As Brad mentioned, and always does a great job of providing all information, this is kind of a new process that we're following on this particular project due to the overnight lodging component that's involved in it. So I'll try to go through here with a little additional detail and take any questions at the end. As mentioned, the site is located on Rogue River Highway. It's a cluster of three existing lots. We're going to be vacating one of those lot lines to put these buildings on their own individual lots and removing the existing home at the bottom. It's kind of in a dilapidated condition. The site is kind of located here at the intersection with the South Y, next door to a mini storage development. And actually, these three lots right here, I'll mention, we are actively involved in also doing also doing a mini-storage expansion on those lots. So, when that project's done, it'll kind of create a wall on the west side of this particular project, primarily surrounded with commercial uses with some residential uses to the north and northeast. These are just a few photos, street photos, of the two buildings that we're talking about today. This left building being, having the overnight aspect to it, and the right building being more of an office use. This is the existing building on the right. You can see there that we do have improvements on Rogue River Highway that are in place right now, but as we go down the side street here, there is not. And so, those improvements on our side of the street will be part of the site plan application, which will be running concurrent to this application. Kind of the same picture that Brad showed here at the bottom. You can see there's a pretty drastic grade difference between what's going to be the parking lot at the bottom and the street above and the buildings. And as shown here on the site plan, that parking lot will be improved on the lower side of that property. We have been fortunate to work with ODOT on the upper side of the property, as you can see here on the left side of the screen. ODOT is going to let us put in two handicap parking spaces in the highway. That's something they don't usually allow because of this severe grade difference. They were kind enough to work with us on the project, so definitely a positive note. Included with the packet, there are some architectural elevations of the existing buildings. Nothing drastic is going to happen with the buildings. There are going to be some maintenance improvements, but we will be installing windows, quite a few windows, to account for fire code with the remodel of those buildings. Also included are the floor pans. This is the west building, which has the sleeping quarters for the treatment residents in the back, has offices in the front facing the street. And then, on the upper level, there's some additional sleeping quarters as well. This is going to be set up more like a dormitory style where they're going to have common living area inside. And again, the office will be on the front facing the public street. Just a few more pictures there. You can kind of see it climbing down the hill. And then, this is the east building. This building is going to be primarily office use, office and group meeting use to kind of support. These two buildings will support one another. Just a few pictures of that building. As Brad mentioned, there's some very specific requirements for this application that we're asking you to approve tonight. Just to kind of high-level the different documents that were put together by OnTrack directly, the Emergency Lodging Access Protocol specifically addresses how individuals are selected for entry into this program, discusses there being some exceptions for pregnant women, some priorities for pregnant women if they come into the program. Emergency Lodging Guidelines addresses orientation requirements, the rules that are in place, very specific rules, very limited pet allowances, so this won't be, there's going to be very specific rules in place for this facility. And then, what the case management's supportive services are going to be providing. Guest Agreement also outlines additional rules, very specifically, no onsite alcohol, drugs, weapons. There's no visitors. There's a very specific curfew from 6:00 AM or 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So, this is not a come-and-go facility. This is a very specific treatment facility for very specific people, and they're going to be out of this facility to improve their lives and get better. The Entry and Transition Policy also addresses some additional placement criteria, qualifications, exclusions, and those operational requirements. So, the one thing I'll point out is OnTrack has been doing this for a long time. This is not a new organization doing this. This is somebody who specializes in treatment facilities, and this is just an expansion of their existing programs that they have in Southern Oregon. So, with that, you know, we feel that this is a, this is something, obviously, I think most people can agree with, is something that's much needed in our community right now. The last couple of years have been very hard on a lot of people, and this is something that's being put into place to help those people and hopefully transition them back into a normal life and productive life. And I think that, as outlined in the application packet, OnTrack has done a very good job of putting together these specific requirements for this special use permit as dictated by the city. And with that, I'm happy to take any additional questions, and if you have any specific questions for OnTrack, we do have representatives tonight that are available.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Brian?
I just had a really quick question on that diagram on the bottom right. What does that little squiggly thing on the corner of the parking lot?
That is a storm water treatment facility, so that's something that we just recently adopted into the Grants Pass development standards. So, that's something that's going to filter the water out that runs off the site.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Valerie?
Yeah, I just, I have a question because I know that there were six lodging for current residents, and then there was 10 for people on the waiting, I mean, in the past, they said they've had, I mean, it was part of the reason that we were so pro for this, is that they were having problems locating people who, at one point, were ready for services, but they didn't have a place to keep them. And so, then, when they would go back out again to look for them, they were lost because they didn't have any way to be contacted. So, it's my understanding that 10 of those are for the home, for the people that are waiting to get into treatment? I just wanted clarification on that because I know there was like a six and then there was a separate 10. And I don't know.
Yes, I think as outlined in the application, I'm trying to remember exactly what those numbers are. I guess there's, a lot of those are people waiting to get into treatment that qualify for treatment.
Okay, okay. And like I said, I think that was what we were really excited about is that, because so many people got lost in the shuffle. So, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward, state your name, and let us know whether or not you live in the
Change my glasses.
Just make sure the light at the base of that microphone is on too, so it's, okay. Is it on? What do I do?
Just twist the mic over closer to your mouth, and I think it should be.
It'll start. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, council and mayor and staff. My name's Ruth Daly. I'm an 18-year resident of Grants Pass and 46-year resident of Josephine County. I'm here in full support for the approval of the special use permit for OnTrack to operate an emergency lodging and outpatient clinic. 16 beds for folks waiting to get into residential treatment is critical for our neighbors that struggle with substance use disorder, and it is imperative in order to show the true compassion of the city of Grants Pass. Dr. Andy Mendenhall, an addiction medicine physician in Portland, commented when discussing Measure 110, that in reality, it is our decades-long underbuilt system of behavioral health, substance use disorders, and affordable housing that are the primary drivers of Oregon's current problems. As a nurse and as a mother of a child who is now five years sober but struggled most of his adult life with alcohol and drug use, I ask you to approve this permit. Let's make Grants Pass a part of the solution. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on behalf of this application? Please step forward, state your name, let us know whether or not you live in the city.
My name's Corbin Arnold, and I've lived in Grants Pass for about four years now. And anyway, it's my first time coming to a city council meeting, so if I seem a little off, that's why. But, I worked at the sobering center for a little over a year, which is kind of like something right along these lines, so it kind of like, you know, hit me. And we had a lot of people that wanted to get into treatment there, but we couldn't keep them there. We had to kick them out and like, sorry, the best you can do is like, go get drunk and come back, you know? And I think this is really cool because this is something that was like a step in between jail and sobering center and treatment. It was like, there was nothing for anyone to go to. So, anyway, I think it's pretty cool. Yeah. Is it like, can I ask a question? Is it going, what's it going to cost me as a person?
During comment, we just accept comment, but we don't answer questions.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask the audience to please hold your applause. It's against the rules, and we also need to get through this meeting as efficiently as possible. We have a lot of business tonight. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone who wants to?
Hi, my name's Brandy Fogel. I actually am a certified recovery mentor for Max's Mission, and I am in full support of this. We have people that we try to refer to detox and we lose them, like you said, and it's so sad. Trying not to let my emotions at the best of me, but I want to see those people succeed. We need to help our community and love them and help them reach their best them, and this facility is going to be the start of that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on behalf of the application? Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition of the application? All right, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for discussion. DJ.
I'll answer the cost question. $890,000 from Department Administration grant is what's been allocated for this project, and the city's going to get the deed to the property that they're moving out of, formerly known as the Yankee Pot Roast.
Brian?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, at this point, it's kind of a formality. We've been supporting this project for about a year with the grant and everything, so this is just kind of the final sign-off. So, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution for OnTrack, Inc. to operate a supportive housing type A land use at 688 and 690 Rogue River Highway.
Was this, I have a question. Was this one of the items that he had requested earlier? Okay. I apologize. We have somebody on the phone who wanted to speak on this issue that I didn't, that I lost track of. So, Jay, if you can hear us, you have two minutes.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'll just keep this really quick. I am very proud of the city council for dedicating a significant amount of your state grant resources to this project. It is a needed project, and I highly encourage you to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Brian. Brian had made a motion, was it as written, to adopt the, okay, he made a motion to approve the request, seconded by Joel? Okay, seconded by Joel. Any comments on that motion? No? Okay. Brian, you made the motion to approve the request. How do you vote?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob? Star seven to unmute? He's unmuted. Okay, he's unmuted. Can't hear you.
Hello? This is Rob.
Yeah, we can hear you, Rob. How do you vote?
I vote to approve.
Thank you. Twain?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes eight to zero. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing to consider an ordinance that would create a developer-installed reimbursement district for the River Mist PUD water line. And our Community Development Director, Brad Clark, coming back up.
Sorry about that. Actually, you don't want to see that one again. Okay. This should be fairly straightforward. You've seen several of these reimbursement districts before. A lot of times, they involve both sewer and water, sometimes streets, sometimes storm. This is one of the few that we have that's actually just water improvement. This is related to the River Mist Planned Unit Development project, and the developer is proposing a installation of water improvements on Shady Lane. So, this is just off Redwood Avenue on the north side between Rogue River and Redwood. Shady Lane runs towards the river off of Redwood, and I'll just show you a map here, but basically, we're talking about 707 feet of new water main that would be installed as a part of the project. It's 362 on Shady Lane and 345 feet on Molly Lane. Here's the boundaries of the district. We're talking about 21 tax lots that are affected. The blue dash line here is where the new water main would be installed. It currently terminates down here closer to Redwood Avenue. So, properties on both the east and west side of Shady Lane would benefit from this, and then Molly Lane also has properties that would benefit. Lot number 21 is the planned unit development that is triggering the improvements, and the developer for that lot has already been tentatively approved for the subdivision, and they are proposing this water main installation. The total estimated cost for it is about $134,600. The estimated water assessments that would be for those properties that would hook in is $4,207. That's per dwelling unit. If in the future, middle housing comes in and you put more than one lot on one of those houses, that 4,207 would basically be shared amongst those. So, that's the total for that lot. So, any future units, if there's more than one, would be paying less than that. So, we've been working with the developer on this for a while. We did do notices to the, to all of those property owners, the 21 affected owners out there. We have not received any comments back. And then, in terms of the procedure, you essentially have to approve these districts. They sit there until the project is completely done, and then the engineers come back, give us the detail in terms of exactly what it costs, and then we bring a very specific ordinance back to you, and then we enter into an agreement with the developer at that time. So, this is step one, and then upon completion, we will have step two. We already talked about that. Talked about that. So, after the final costs are submitted, then we'll bring that final ordinance, Consolidated Land Holdings LLC is the name of the developer in this project. So, the call to action for you is tonight's date, and there's a few options on the screen for the council to consider.
Thanks, Brad. Counsel, do you have any questions? Valerie?
My only question is, are they all currently vacant lots?
They are not.
So, there are currently?
There are some existing dwelling units on the 21, yeah.
And are they on city water, or are they currently on a well, or how's that work?
They would be on wells, yeah. So, they don't, they don't have to pay until they actually hook up to the city system. So, maybe the well goes bad, or they choose to, you know, subdivide or partition their lot, and at that point, they would have to hook up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thanks.
Okay, DJ?
Yeah, so I have a good, a question, like, for middle housing and reimbursement districts, if they were to create child lots, could the parent lot still utilize a well, but then the child lots need to hook up to city water? How does that work?
Well, if there was an existing house on the parent lot and the existing house, you know, there was no changes to it, then, yeah, potentially, that could continue to stay because our code does allow for existing wells to remain.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone who wants to speak against this application? All right, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for discussion. Valerie?
Yeah, the more I see the development being able to happen and bring more houses in, I say, let's do it. So, I'm going to move to adopt the ordinance, creating the developer-installed reimbursement district, CC 6560 for the River Mist PUD water line, and have it read by title only, first reading.
Thank you. Seconded by? Seconded by Rick. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Valerie, you made the motion to create the district. How do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Rob? Dwayne?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
An ordinance of the council of the City of Grants Pass, creating a developer-installed reimbursement district, CC 6560, for the River Mist PUD water line.
Thank you. Brian?
We can do the second reading even though Rob didn't vote, right?
Rob's not a part of the meeting if he can't respond. I'm going to count him as...
Very good. All right, well, in that case, I have the same motion, second reading.
Seconded by Joel. Any discussion on the second reading? All right, Brian, you made the motion to adopt the ordinance. How do you vote?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Oh, Valerie? Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the council of the City of Grants Pass, creating a developer-installed reimbursement district, CC 6560, for the River Mist PUD water line.
All right, thank you. Let me know when you hear from Rob, okay? We are, okay, so item 2A, we're going to move further down the agenda, so we're going to move now into item 2B. And so the way we're going to have this, I guess, public safety, we have two different presentations, but we're going to hear the presentations and take council questions, and then we'll take public comment, and then we'll move into council discussion. So if we could please start off with the presentation for item 2B regarding the food and beverage tax.
I'm going to be doing a brief presentation on the food and beverage tax ordinance, if it'll cooperate with me. So, subject in summary, I'll give you the background and the highlights, the high points of the ordinance. The relationship to council goals is to enhance community safety. At our last council meeting, we were given direction to draft an ordinance for a food and beverage tax, and the purpose of this tax would set a tax rate on prepared food and beverages that would help provide the resources necessary to continue providing public safety services for exclusive city use. So the food and beverage tax is designed to be used for only public safety. So, in the ordinance itself, we have definitions of food. Combination facility, I want you guys to think like a combination supermarket or a convenience store where they might sell hot food and then groceries in the same sort of facility. Food includes all prepared food items and beverages excluding alcoholic beverages served in a restaurant, including takeout or to-go delivered orders. One thing before I continue with this presentation to note is that this ordinance is basically a copy paste of Ashland's food and beverage tax. Now, the decision to base this food and beverage tax on Ashland really had to do with the regionality of the city. It's in the same region as we are. Yohots and Cannon City are both extremely small and have about an eighth of the population of the City of Grants Pass. So that's, this is what this ordinance is modeled after. Chapter 4.0302O is the tax imposed. So except for the exempt or tax capped activities, the city imposes and levies in addition to all their taxes, fees, and charges of every kind, a tax upon food and beverages sold by restaurants located within the city to the public, except for whole cakes, pies, loaves of bread, if purchased for consumption off premises, and for alcoholic beverages. Taxing alcohol is the province of the state and only the state. Any food and beverage is sold by a caterer for an event located within the city except for alcoholic beverages and exempt events as defined in chapter 4.0303OK. It's a 3% food and beverage tax, and any fraction of half a cent will be rounded up. Chapter 4.0303O names all the, lists the exemptions, which are on the screen behind me. So anything that's, any food or beverage that's sold by a public school or private school, hospital grounds, vending machines, bed and breakfast establishments. So the rationale is really to capture food that is designed to be eaten or consumed These are other exemptions that are listed in the ordinance. The ordinance defines the operator, and the operator is the individual or the company that runs whatever business is being, whatever restaurant is being subject to the tax, and as such, it's going to be the operator's duty to collect the tax. So, as of right now, the way it's supposed to work is that the operator will collect the tax, it'll be administered, and then it'll be remitted to our finance department, or if it comes to it, a consultant that we decide to enter into a contract with to help us administer this tax. So every operator shall honor before the last day of the month following the end of each calendar quarter, make a return to the director, finance director, on forms provided by the city specifying the total sales subject to this chapter and the amount of tax collected under the chapter. An operator can select a shorter reporting period, and if the operator or director deems it necessary in order to ensure collection of the tax, and the director may require further information as needed. The penalties, any operator who fails to remit any portion of the tax imposed by this chapter within the time required shall pay a penalty of 10% of the amount of the tax in addition to the amount of the tax. The operator is going to be responsible for keeping track of all of the records and leave the records open to the city at all reasonable times. Keyword there being reasonable. And except as otherwise required by law, it'll be unlawful for the city or any officer or employee to divulge or release or make known in any manner any financial information submitted or disclosed to the city under the terms of this chapter. Nothing in this chapter shall prohibit the disclosure of names and addresses of any person who is operating a restaurant, general statistics in a form that would prevent identification of the financial information regarding an individual operator, presentation of evidence to the court or other tribunal having jurisdiction, the prosecution of any criminal or civil action, or an appeal for the amount due to the city under the chapter. The disclosure of information, when that disclosure is conditionally exempt, information is ordered under public records law procedures, and the disclosure of records related to a business's failure to report and remit the tax when the reporter taxes in arrears for over six months or the tax exceeds $5,000. The city, for the purpose of determining the correctness of any tax return, or for the purpose of an estimate of taxes due, may examine or cause to be examined an agent representative designed by it for that purpose, or any other records that bear the matter of the operator's tax return. So, when we're talking about how this would operate in practical, real life, it's going to be city administration who would be helping to head this up, probably with the help of a contractor. This contractor would also be available to assist individuals in collecting that tax and administering it. But in any case, we have the call to action date, and it'll be at council's discretion as well as the call to action, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Augustus. Council, do you have any questions? Brian?
Thanks, Augustus. I just want to make sure I'm clear on the scope of what would be taxed. So clearly, sit-down restaurants, fast food restaurants, any sort of prepared food at like a mini-mart or a grocery store, things that can, that are ready to eat.
Yes, that's pretty accurate. So you're talking about, like, think of deli sandwich that you can get at Safeway, for example, or prepackaged foods that have like chips, a sandwich, and a cookie in them. Think about your Dutch Bros, or your Human Bean, or your Starbucks. That's mainly what you're, that's mainly what you're going to be targeting with a tax like this, yes.
Okay, did I miss any big categories there?
Um, no, not that I can see.
Okay, thank you.
Valerie, then Vanessa?
Yeah, I had a question, a couple questions. My first question was on the catering part of it.
Yes.
Are there any caps on the amount? Because I thought there was some sort of a cap that was put on for caterers.
So there's a cater, there's a cap of $5,000, which means that the maximum that any caterer would pay is $150 in tax, or the maximum that would be charged in food and beverage would be 150. That's under exemptions, 4.0303O subsection K.
Okay, thank you. I thought I'd read that. And then I also had a question about the bed and breakfast, and is that because that's considered lodging, and so they're already currently paying lodging taxes for that?
I would believe so, but also, it probably has to do with the nature of the way that bed and breakfast book their business. So it's more of a package deal, the accommodations and the food typically. And so it's kind of difficult, I don't think the intent of this ordinance is to capture and separate out those sort of package deals. That would be a lot of work, I think, for an administrator. But I think that what, while lodging tax may be one of those things that they're probably collecting, it's probably just because of the way the packaging is done for their deals.
Okay, thank you.
Vanessa?
I also had a question under exemptions. There, item E, it says sold in temporary restaurants, including food stands. Is food stands, is the spirit of that like a bake sale table, or is that a food truck?
I think, you know, the spirit of that seems to indicate that it would be like a pop-up bake sale, something like that, or, you know, say a lemonade stand.
Okay.
And the operative provision in that section, the, come on, y'all, come on, y'all, I'm just a messenger here.
It's an exemption.
Like, the operative provision in that section is operated by nonprofit organizations or service clubs.
Okay.
So these are like, just for an example, active clubs selling baked goods to raise money for, for something.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, at this time, we're going to move on and do our presentation 2C regarding the public safety utility fee.
Actually, I have a question.
I'm sorry, we don't do, we will have comment, I've already said this, we will have comment after this next presentation, and no more outbursts from the audience, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have the easier of the two presentations, and one you've already seen mostly before. Similar, I'm going to go over a little bit of the background and some of the highlights of the ordinance, and for the public here, I'm going to probably go through some of the details that they may not know about, and the relationship to the council goals is to enhance community safety. So also, on February 7th, council gave us, our staff direction, to draft an ordinance for a public safety utility fee with an update to the comprehensive fee schedule, which is later, is a later presentation. The public safety utility fee uses the transportation utility fee methodology, which was the same model used for the jail services fee back in 2014. This model was correlated closer to the call volume and revenues generated for both police and fire, and other methodologies considered included water meter size, water usage, impervious area, and per account. Definitions of the public safety utility fee, chapter 8.90. Public safety services includes but is not limited to services provided by the Grants Pass Police Department and Grants Pass Fire Rescue, as well as the operating, non-operating debt service and capital requirements for other public safety-related facilities, programs, and/or services, and dispatch is considered under the police department. 8.90.060, establishment of the revision of public safety utility fee. So the fees for individual property shall be upon the developed use of the property and the direct and indirect benefit of public safety services. Collection of the fee for each property shall be made by a monthly charge which shall commence on the first day of June 2024. If there is neither public water or public wastewater service to the improved property governed by this code, a monthly bill shall be ensued and shall be due and payable within 15 days of issuance. 8.90.065, the cost of living adjustment, just like all of our other utility fees, there will be a cost of living each January 1st of each year, and that is calculated based on the CPI average between October and November of each year. 8.90.070, public safety utility fee restricted for use. All fees collected by the city under the public safety utility fee shall be restricted for the use in providing such public safety services and other public safety capacities. So more or less, this is saying this will be 100% dedicated to public safety. 8.90.080, city to maintain other public safety-related facilities. So this goes into the city intends to maintain all public safety-related facilities within city-owned lands, city rights away, and city easements, and may maintain other publicly-accepted public safety-related facilities within the city and urban growth boundary where agreements for annexation may have been obtained, or where the city receives funding from the county or public safety. More or less, we're going to take care of our police stations and our fire stations that we have within the city. 8.90.090, imposition of the utility fee. The categories of development for the administration of the public safety utility charge shall match the categories description and calculation methodology maintained in chapter 8.60, transportation utility fee. And there's a list of them, I'm not going to read them all, but single-family residential, multifamily, condominium, elderly facility care, and then there are a bunch of commercial 8.90.100, principles of categorization. Each building is categorized based on the methodology established in chapter and section 8.60.100 of the transportation utility fee ordinance. I've highlighted, this is actually coming from a separate code in the city, where the principle of categorization in that transportation utility fee, each building is categorized based on the primary activity of the establishment that occupies the building or site. The primary activity will be established by the relative number of transactions or visits from the general public rather than the volume of sales or dollars. Section B, where distinct and separate businesses are located within a single building and share a common entrance from the parking area, the business shall be categorized and charged as a single business using the category which fits most of the businesses within the building. If there is no clear majority of use, the moderate traffic retail commercial category shall apply. Where distinct and separate businesses are located within a single building and each has its own entrance from the parking area, the businesses shall be categorized and charged as separate businesses. So the key here is the entrances to the businesses. 8.60100, section C, where a single business includes activities where it could be defined as different categories of use, the entire business will be categorized as a single use based on the primary use of the building. If there is no clear primary use, the moderate traffic retail commercial category shall apply. apply. And in Section J of the same code, where two potential rates may be applied to a single category, such as elderly care facilities, the calculation shall be made utilizing both methods and the lesser of two fees established as the applicable fee for the development. Basically, if there is a mixed use, we will take the cheaper of the rates. Section 8.90.130, Billing and Collection of the Public Safety Utility Fee, Unified Billing. This is saying that we will be billing with water, wastewater, stormwater, and other transportation user service charges. Partial payments on the utility bill shall be allocated first to the public safety charge, second to the transportation, third to water, and fourth to stormwater, and lastly to wastewater. The customer should not be allowed to specify a different allocation. 8.90.150, Exemptions. The city council, made by resolution, exempt any class of user when it determines the public interest deems it necessary. In this instance, the city will exempt school district, county government, city government, and special districts formed under Oregon law as a local government, or any chapter 190 combination governmental entity controlled by the local governments, from paying a public safety utility fee for facilities owner-leased and operated by said entities provided such facilities are used for governmental purposes. And our call to action date is at council's discretion, and call to action is also at council's discretion. The alternatives are to approve the ordinance as written, amend the terms, or disapprove the ordinance. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Jay. Council, do you have any questions? J.C., sorry.
Did you call me? Okay.
Yeah, Valerie.
I have it marked on here somewhere, but you were talking about the moderate traffic retail commercial category. Is that category A? What is, I mean, I'm not sure, because I know there's a whole series, and I wasn't sure exactly what the moderate traffic retail commercial category, if met.
I don't have the page in front of me. There are actually 13 different classifications that all constitute as commercial A. Commercial A changes based on the type of business and the size of business, and that goes off the ITE manual and the number of trips generated per business type.
Okay. And I guess my question then is, and this goes back to the principles of categorization, where a single business includes activities which could be defined as different categories of use, the entire business will be categorized as a single use based on the primary use of the building. If there is no clear primary use, the moderate traffic retail commercial category shall comply. So is there, is that a special category, or?
So potentially, if you have, let's say, a building that is shared on the bottom floor by multiple businesses, but there's only one entrance into that, but they have like a flea market, different businesses within, in theory, you would get the moderate charge.
Okay, so you're saying basically you would push down, you wouldn't go up, and that's basically what you're saying with most of these?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Brian?
Thanks, J.C. I had a question on section 8.90.070, talking about the Public Safety Utility Fee Restricted for Use. Says it shall be restricted for use in providing such public safety services and other public safety capacities. So I was just maybe trying to get a little bit of clarification on what other public safety capacities might encompass.
I might have to have the city attorney, like, weigh in here, but my guess is it's anything related to what would be public safety as far as in nature. Off the top of my head, I can't think of anything, but it keeps it open-ended to where if public safety is running the program, then that it would be as of nature. So I would say the Crisis Center and maybe the Soberam Center, even though they're not technically the police or fire department, they make contributions that come from the public safety area of these cities' finances.
Okay, so like, as an example, I would assume that, say, a fire station needed a renovation, that would probably qualify under this other public safety capacities?
Yeah, it's, it's like an ancillary public safety use, like, that's, that would qualify for sure.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I had one other question. I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on how the fee works for the different rates. So I just want to make sure that whatever, whatever we end up doing, if we do something with this, the commercial A rate is higher than the residential rate by a factor of approximately 3.3. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So if we did a $10 fee for residential, it would be $33 for commercial A.
Hand change, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. At this time, we're going to move into public comment. On public safety funding only, I would appreciate it if you don't talk about, you know, problems with the parks or other issues related to public safety. This discussion needs to stick to the funding issue. This is an opportunity to address the city council as a group, not as individuals. Each speaker will be given two minutes, and there's a yellow light that comes on when you have 30 seconds left. So when the red, when the yellow light goes on, it's a cue to wrap up your comments, and when the red light goes off, please wrap up. If you have two words, it's okay, but I, I'm going to cut you off if you try to go on, and I don't like to do that. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free from slander, threats, or other personal attacks. Signs or placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office, and other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. With that, please come forward, state your name, and let us know whether or not you live in the city limits. And who wants to talk to us about public safety funding?
Good evening, my name is Julie Hartford, and I live in the city of Grants Pass. I would like to thank the city council and the mayor for working so hard to find a way to fund the police and fire departments. I know that this is a difficult issue because there is so much pushback from the community. I would like to remind the community that the city council's job is to fund city services. Police and fire are not asking for extra funding, we are talking about funding them to minimum levels. We don't fund, if we don't fund them, the cost of the increased crime, the unanswered calls, and the higher insurances will cost our community much more than the increased taxes we are talking about today. I would like to specifically address the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce is actively working to defend the police and fire departments. They say they support police and fire, but I think they need to look up the definition of the word "support." Asking police and firefighters to do their jobs without sustainable funding is not support. If I were to go into any businesses in this town and request goods, services, food, or drink without paying for them, I would be tossed out. Do you know what would be the worst thing for businesses in this city? The worst thing would be if we didn't have police and fire. Can you imagine the costs to the businesses if we didn't have those services? Can you imagine what it would be like to call 911 and be told, "Sorry, we're not working right now"? Our first responders risk their lives daily to serve our community. Asking them to do that without full compensation, or asking them to do that without sufficient backup, is unconscionable. I am sympathetic to those with low incomes, however, they are often the ones who are at the highest risk when public safety is cut back. Earlier this year, we had a gentleman back his truck into a business and steal a bunch of guns. I have to wonder if he would have come to this area, sorry. But, our guys got it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christina Hedberg, I'm a citizen in Grants Pass. First of all, I want to thank the police force. We, I really believe that we can find another way to fund you guys, you need the funding. Our esteemed staff, council members, and mayor, I appreciate your valuable time and would like to express my gratitude for the dedicated work that you contribute to our community. While I understand the challenges you face, I was disheartened to hear Mayor Bristol and Councilor Lovelace suggest in recent public comment that the community's approval for water tax for police funding implies a willingness to explore additional funding avenues like this tax food and beverage industry. I, I commend Brian for initiating a survey to gauge the community's statements for his thoughtful representation of our needs. You're always looking out for us, and I see that, and I appreciate that. Allow me to convey my concern that if this proposed tax is implemented, I may no longer be able to support local businesses or enjoy a break from cooking as a working mother and university student. I implore you to reconsider this course of action, as passing such a task would be detrimental to our community. Your careful consideration for this matter is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor, council, members of the public, my name is Bracken Sharp, I'm the vice president of the Grants Pass Professional Firefighters. Wow, that is really high. IAFF Local 3564, and just in the way here. I'm not going to get up here and tell you anything that you guys don't already know. You are eight of the most informed citizens in the city of Grants Pass on this topic, and we've elected you to be informed and make informed decisions. One thing you do have is the why. As a firefighter, I teach at the college, I teach our new recruits, and I help teach our shift. My job is to know the why of what we do. Because I said so is not an appropriate answer. When people call, if this is enacted, which we strongly believe it needs to be, you have the why, you have that reason to explain. This is why we're here, this is why we've got here. If I can, just real quick, to the public, this sucks. No way about it, it sucks. What I can guarantee is that with a utility fee and a food and beverage tax, is at any time of the day and night, 24/7, 365, when you need help, we are coming. We are professional, highly-trained firefighters that are here to save you, save your property, save your family, and anything you need help with, we are here for you. Remember that moving forward, if this gets passed, if you want to complain, I understand, it sucks. 3% utility tax, everyone's getting taxed, it sucks. But with that, know what you're getting. I hope that nobody ever has to call 911. It's usually the worst day of someone's life. But when it, when you do have to call, know we're coming, we're going to fix your problem. Quickly, efficiently, and we're going to make sure that you're taken care of. So, as we move forward with this, I'd ask that everyone please keep that in mind. Your firefighters love you, we love to serve you, this sucks, there's no way around it. We're at the end of the road here, and if we don't have anything more, we're going to lose firefighters, we may lose fire stations, and we're not going to get the Grants Pass back that we used to have. Thank you.
My name's Corbin Arnold, still in Grants Pass for three years, and I just, I agree with what he said, and, you know, since I've lived here for about four years, I have noticed some changes. I don't want to go to Baker Park and swim anymore, certain things, so I completely validate that there is an over-usage of the, you know, police and firefighters to deal with, like, a lot of stuff going on here right now. And so I think that what we're going to do by putting those taxes on the small businesses, like, I've worked in a kitchen, it's, it's awful, you know, stuff's always going bad, those small business owners are going to be hurting the worst, they're going to be laying off, you know, people that are, you know, at the lower level of, like, income are going to be hurting a lot from that. But we can't lose our firefighters or police, I love that about America. Someone shows up at your door, I'll call a number, and some guy with a gun's going to show up for me, it's pretty cool, right? You know, the police, you know, our house is on fire. But I think there could be a cutback on something that's maybe just like a little too fatty on the budget, or somehow, like, that we're spending on, I see, you know, I love the flowers, but, you know, I'll have the flowers and, you know, save a couple bucks, or, you know, because I like plants. Oh, so yeah, that's all I have to say, I'm not going to take up any more time.
Do I have to wait for a light? Hi, Suzie Barber, I live in this city. While, while I understand the need for additional revenue to fund public services, imposing such a tax could have detrimental effects for our small local businesses. Instead of burdening our residents and business owners with additional taxes, I urge the city council to explore alternative solutions. One such solution could be to thoroughly review all city offices and departments to identify areas where budgets can be trimmed by a modest 4%. By implementing efficiency measures and prioritizing spending, we can alleviate the need for new taxes while still ensuring adequate funding for public safety and other essential services. Thank you.
My name's Ron, I'm the owner of the Thai Barbecue, and our family has had that restaurant since 1999 in Grants Pass. The problem I see with the water and the food tax, for me, in my opinion, is it's not going to help the vagrancy or the homelessness. If the officers we have cannot enforce the laws in place today, homelessness and vagrancy around my business, more officers will obviously not help the situation. So every time I've called, they can't help me. So when we get 10 more officers, they're still not going to be able to. So we have a loss of the income in downtown because of the homeless and the vagrancy. I can't see that's going to make any more income for our businesses. So you can charge us, but your job is to help create income, and this is not going to create, this is not going to create income. We are currently very, very pushed by the time that we have, and you're going to push us more. So it says 1999, we've held that restaurant up. So we were currently in a low economy, and there is a definite loss of revenue due to the homeless downtown. All, all these officers are going to do is control the controllable. Who's going to control the uncontrollable? Every time I ask, they say it's Portland, Poland, then ask Portland for the money. Thank you.
You don't have to touch anything.
I don't have to touch anything.
Nope.
Okay, yeah, so this is a complicated issue, and I, my dad is the fire marshal of Rogue River, Rogue River, and that young gentleman, I hear his passion and purpose, and I see where he's coming from, and I agree with him. But I have a couple clarifying questions. So I was told by multiple business owners, and this might be incorrect, but it starts at 3%.
Can you please state your name and let us know whether or not you live in the city?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I live in the city, and my name's River Rose. So it starts at 3%, but I've heard from multiple people that it can go up 15%? Is that correct? It is?
This is not an opportunity for questions, you can ask your questions, and if council wants to address them later, they will, but it's just two minutes for comments.
Okay, well, it wasn't stated up there, so we're not getting the full information, so that's a problem, and I'm just clarifying that. Going back to exemptions, I saw that the hospitals were exempt, schools, there's a bunch of other ones I couldn't quite see. I think there's a better way to do this. We're struggling right now in small businesses. I used to be a waitress for years, and we have, basically what I'm saying is, is there's a better way. They need to get the money, but this is a deep fundamental issue. The money can be sourced elsewhere, it can be dispersed more. And also, on another, on another note, Dutch Bros actually won't be paying this tax, they've moved their headquarters before, so there's been, you know, there's some nefarious stuff going on. There's some, there's some, there's some talk underneath the surface, and we need to be real about this, and be honest. And there's so much. You know, we can do this better, you guys can do this better. I know there's a lot of heat and anger coming at, towards you, city attorney, I don't know how to pronounce your name, you know, you are the messenger, I get it, but, you know, there's a lot of emotions because we, we want to be heard as a people, and it should be a co-creative effort, you know? That's the age we're moving into. So that's what I have to say, I don't have the answer, but I think there needs to be a better way.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Terry Hopkins, membership representative for the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association, local citizen and local business owner. In January of last year, when this council embarked on a decades-long task of public safety funding, many great questions were asked. Councilor Yunker asked about comparative analysis and how other cities' funding and expenses compared to ours. Councilor Lovelace and Councilor King suggested advisory committee or groups to help with input. Unfortunately, Mr. Yunker's request was quickly dismissed as an apples-to-oranges comparison. Citizen advisory group was never formed, and the conversation on efficiencies waned. Council was presented with Council was presented with information on a very small number of funding options, and those options were quickly narrowed to the same options we've gone back over and over again. Now, over a year later, here we are with the same options of putting the burden on one industry, but this time without the vote of the people. New change. The Chamber of Commerce has opposed this. The Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association has opposed this. A local CPA who serves our city for 10 years as the city's Finance Director has opposed this, and even went so far as to provide an immediate and viable solution. Local businesses oppose this action, and most importantly, your constituents, the voters who elected you to serve our community have shown up in numbers to oppose this action. If your goal in getting to this point is to show your undying and unwavering support for our police and fire and citizens, you've accomplished your task. However, if your goal is to place the burden on the backs of small businesses with an ordinance that allows you to raise the tax rate to any amount at any time in hopes that small businesses cannot organize a rally to file for referendum, you are wrong. And the damage and trust that you will create within your local business community and constituents will be beyond repair. Do not pass a sales tax on meals without the vote of the people.
Hi, my name's Jeff Mount. I am a citizen of Grants Pass. I'm a local bartender here at one of the restaurants. I know a lot of you guys. I've waited on y'all before, and I just want to say, I think that this is the wrong way to go. I'm all for police and fire. We pay 25% in taxes already. Why aren't they already funded? You know what I mean? Why do we always have to ask for more from us just to keep them going? I mean, that's the first thing. But regardless of that, instead of charging local businesses, why not put a tax on some of these corporations whose headquarters are out of state? You know, they take a lot of our money out of our community. Let them give some back, you know? Walmart is a big one. McDonald's, Dutch Brothers, if they're moving out of state. Give them some taxes. See if they want to show up and prevent it, you know? This is our town. This isn't Ashland. This isn't a copy-paste thing. This is our lives. So, thank you.
I'm going to ask the audience to please refrain from clapping and cheering, okay? We need this meeting to move along. John? No, it's against the council rules, and I'm sorry. I know it makes me sound rude, but I, my job is to enforce the council rules. And I said at the beginning, no clapping or cheering, and I want you to stick to that, okay? Or else I'll call a recess, and we can take a break. Hi, John, go.
Hi, my name is John Bowen. Thank you for this opportunity. I understand you guys have a really hard thing in front of you, and I want to talk about trust and taxing mechanisms. We all want safety. There's no question of that. The woman addressed that. And, and safety, but my point is, safety should be funded first, and it used to be. And so, we pay our property taxes, and it used to come out of the general fund in the good old days, I'll say. And over, you know, at least in my experience with the city over the last 17 years, we fought for public safety levies. We fought for all different kinds of mechanisms because we didn't have a sustainable taxing mechanism to support public safety. But we never really get back to the source, the general fund and the city. And, and my observations, we need to get back to that. Because right now, what you're proposing is we got public safety, excuse me, property taxes as funding mechanism number one, property, public safety levies. Now we're going to get number three, which is a fee, and number four, which is a sales tax. This is absurd, and we're getting out of control. And so if we implement these two mechanisms, we'll never have a balanced budget, if you will, and a budget within our means. If you think about it, with our budget overall, I hear numbers floated, and it's very confusing, and I'll call it hocus pocus, the way the budgets get seen, and I've experienced that. But, you know, in general, we got a $205 million budget. And then they say, well, the general fund is only this, and the general fund needs to take all this. And, but we don't fund public safety within that, and then we have to get these other three taxing mechanisms. And I'm asking you respectfully to go back. Let's earn the trust of the people, and let's prove, show us why the general fund doesn't fund public safety first. Why does the city government need to keep growing? Why do salaries need to keep going up? Why are we keep having to, you know, pay purse? Because the state tells us so. When isn't it time we go back to the state and say, this isn't sustainable in these local economies that all your policies restrict us? How about the state lottery helping us out? Thank you.
John, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Shelley Solomon. Most of you know me. I own The Horny Goat, and I live in the city of Grants Pass. As a business owner, employing more than 20 people going into her ninth year, I'm asking the city not impose this burden on an already difficult industry. Restaurant businesses are struggling due to the recovery of 2020, rising product costs, lack of employees, state-manded wages, and the downturn of economy. Sales are down 30% as well as tourism. Credit card processing fees alone are 3%. Profit margins of the restaurant are already very slim. Most do it for the love of the arts. The burden in the backend of the office, POS systems, would need updating if not installing new systems, which would cost thousands of dollars, and accounting would be a nightmare. How do you divide Coke from a glass of whiskey? Thank you. That's it.
Mike Pelfrey, city resident. I spoke about this two weeks ago, and ultimately, it comes down to the fact that our city leadership has failed the cities, the citizens of Grants Pass. I said this before, and I said it, I'm going to say it again. Everybody in this room has to budget their own financial well-being. And so, we are tasked to do that for our families. Unfortunately, somebody has dropped the ball in the city of Grants Pass and has failed to do the same for our city. The other thing that really grates at me is the fact that you think that it's going to be visitors that are going to come to the city of Grants Pass and are going to be the ones spending the money and paying for the food and all the tax. Well, have you driven around this town lately? Does this look like a town that somebody wants to come visit? This place is a damn cesspool. And so, I'm over it. I, I will say it, and I will keep preaching until I drop dead. You guys have run this city into the ground. And now you want the citizens that have worked their asses off every day to dip into their pocket and spend more money because you failed to do your job. So, in the end, again, it comes down to leadership. And unfortunately, what we're not having and what we're not seeing is good leadership. I am all for the police and the fire. You guys knew this snowball was coming, and yet you sat back and did nothing about it. You wait till the last minute. Finally, the one thing that I'm going to tell you, and this is something that I think is probably the biggest mistake that you're making, and that is, these people need to be able to vote on this issue. And without the vote of the people, you're stepping in a really, really bad shithole. Thank you.
My name's Kirk Jensen. I own several houses around the Grants Pass area, and my taxes have gone up $3,000 in the last two years. I can't see paying any more without me raising the rent on the people who live in my homes. I'm sure that these people are not excited about that prospect. Enough of everything has gone up, your groceries and everything else. Now I have to raise your rent because you guys raised my taxes. I don't think it's right for everybody else in town. Thank you.
My name's Mr. Fitch. I'm resident. You still lacking the direction is why everybody's denying your levies. It's great to see you guys here. It's wonderful. Last time was 50%, now it's 80%. You have such disdain for this community that anybody that comes to you with a decent complaint, you block the bridge of justification to go to the DA. You play this 3D game of distractions where you devalue the person giving you the complaint. You discredit that evidence, and then you discard your lies as the truth to pass through your court system that believe they are the executive branch. That's impersonating the damn president. You guys have milked this cow dry. And I guarantee you, you pass this thing without doing the right thing, you're going to be a ghost town. I can guarantee you, people here would volunteer to be an oversight committee to make sure these guys are doing their job. This has been going on for over 40 years, guys. He hasn't brought, you haven't come here for 2016, I know, buddy. But this problem's been here for decades, and the people continue to say, we don't trust you guys. Have a good day.
Hi, my name's John Connor, and I own The Hall here in Grants Pass. I'm not going to be embarrassed to say that the last four years were the hardest we've ever had. And modeling a plan after Ashland's tax program is kind of like comparing the Southern Oregon Raiders to the Ducks. We're not Ashland. Currently, I've been trying to participate in revitalizing downtown Grants Pass. We've been established for about 10 years now. So, it's actually really hard to kind of comprehend these two things happening at the same time. We totally support public safety, but we do deal with some of the issues on a daily basis. Balancing the books is kind of seems like the main problem. Logistically, this is going to be so hard on an industry that's already battled everything. I just did five doubles in a row. I don't know if you guys know what that means, but that's like five double shifts. Collecting change is not something we do. Having to do this on a monthly basis and just the administrative costs should not be our burden. I'm willing to participate any way possible, but collecting tax is actually a tax on us just physically, mentally, and financially. So, it just seems a lot of this doesn't really like line up. That's really all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Travis Hemmern. I live in the city. I stand here in two capacities. For those of you who didn't know me, for over 20 years, paramedic firefighter. I'm also a business owner in Grants Pass. The big thing I want to share with you tonight are some key considerations about the business side of this. In the sense of this, public safety, well-funded public safety is a true value to any community. I've seen that, and we need that here for sure with all the problems we have. The tax really puts that burden on a select few and not everyone paying equitably, and I don't think that's right. I think that for a service that benefits all, it really needs to be covered by all, however we do that. In an industry that is incredibly sensitive to price, restaurants are referred to as a penny business. Inflation, COVID, dispensable income, all those things are what take restaurants down very quickly. And adding that burden to them will impact their business. Along with that, you have the legal and compliance risk, the professional fees of setting up the taxes in your own system, making sure your team members, you know, do the right thing, get everything done properly. And if not, the burden is on you as an operator. Again, extra expenses, extra things to consider. I think that the other side of that is, there's an extra expense to the city which costs money. There's a new administration that has to be done to oversee this tax. So in a sense, you're creating additional expenses to oversee this tax. At the end of the day, I think many people just don't have good information and don't understand. I think the reason these things don't pass is a lack of education of the community. And I'm not saying that's not done. I'm saying that you have the difficult task of really spoon-feeding that to these citizens and to us. I've learned things just by digging into this a little bit that I didn't even know. And so, to really get these things passed, one, people have to understand the impact of the service that they're getting, and well-funded services are truly valuable. But they also have to understand that their money is used responsibly and fiscally conservatively. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charles Smith. I'm not a resident of Josephine County, but I am a manager of True Juice, a local organic establishment that serves beverages. This is a great opportunity, and I think it's a very friendly meeting. I know there seems to be a lot of anger here, but I think it's an opportunity for everybody up here to maybe take advantage of listening to some issues here. There's an opportunity for you to do some things. Remember this, if nothing more, get to the answer of yes, it can be done with what they want. If it's safety you want, and it's been the police and the fire, that hasn't worked, it sounds like. Let me give you some real simple solutions. You go around town, and you see the gas, and it seems to be self-served. You have the power. This is a city. You have the power. You have the power to make it not self-served, and you can tax that and put some people that need employment, young kids, instead of doing drugs, and creating the problems you have, which is why you want the police out there taking care of these hoodlums and these bullies. You can solve it and give them a job. You can also listen to these guys that are saying, hey, maybe you can take some of the lottery money and do a job there and get it there instead of taxing the businesses. This town has lost businesses. I know. I'm a manager of a business, and you're going to lose more businesses. This is not Ashland, and don't act like it is. You're pushing businesses out of here, and if you put tax here, I think this town should seat you out of office. You need to help this town.
Sir, the red light is going.
That's what you need to do, and that's what I'm trying to help you do.
It's somebody else's turn now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Eric Solomon, a resident of Grants Pass. And I agree with this sentiment that singling out a certain class of business to fund safety, which is very important for everybody, it's just, that is wrong. Especially from the poorest workers in our community. I'm a local restaurant owner, and I've seen for so many years how service staff, service staff struggles, young mothers, young homeowners. And, you know, when these prices go up, you're going to put some restaurants out of business. And the customer, they're in a financial pinch too. There's less money. So, they will tip us. That's just where it's going to come from. It's going to come out of their income. The poorest, most vulnerable people in our community has to fund safety for everybody. There's got to be another way to have everybody sharing this because of safety for everybody. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Bretko. I live in Grants Pass, and I own a business downtown. I just want to say that in the, when the Ashland tax was passed, it was over 20 years ago, it was a very different economy, and it was a very tourist-rich economy. It's not the same one. If you tried to pass this tax in Ashland, I guarantee it wouldn't pass. I don't know if you've been downtown lately, but things are shuttered. Things are not looking good anywhere in any town in Southern Oregon right now. And the restaurants are stretched. It's been a long time since restaurants have been full and happy and what we're picturing when we bring up a tax like this. The truth is that we have not recovered from COVID. We are still struggling from the pandemic, and we need the city's support to return and come back to what we were before, before these years. We're not there. We don't have the employees. We don't have the ingredients. We don't have the supplies that we need to do the job. And a tax like this at this time is tone-deaf, and I'm really asking you all to read the room. Thank you.
My name is Chris Parker. I'm the owner of Herb's Restaurant. I have been there 50 years next month, and I've owned it for 30. You're hitting an industry that's been devastated over the last four and a half years. We have not recovered. I don't know that we're ever going to. I support law enforcement and fire, and it should be funded first. You need to allocate your funds, just like we've had to. I had to sell the property my restaurant is on to keep my business running and my employees working during COVID. Water bill that used to be $300 is now $1,000. There has to be a better way than to put a food and beverage tax on an industry that has been devastated. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name's Alan Hartford, city of Grants Pass. You all, you've seen me here before. You know I support you and what you're doing here. I've been with you as you've tried to work through some of these issues. You've looked at the different ways. You parsed it out. You've asked for input from the community. You've been, you've debated this back and forth over the You've been, you've debated this back and forth over the entire time I've lived in this city. And admittedly, it's only been a couple of years, but I've been dedicated to this one thing because of my 34 years of service in the fire service. So tonight you saw a presentation to an off-duty firefighter that, that basically did what any firefighter would do on whether they're working or not. But what you saw here also were supporters of his from his fire department, Medford Fire Department. Maybe you know, maybe you don't know, I've learned, many of those people in this room used to work for Grants Pass. And they left Grants Pass because it's unstable. The funding is unstable. You're going to continue to teach and train firefighters to go elsewhere. The ISO rating may drop. If you cut down your services, the insurance service organization is going to cut the rating of the city's fire department. That's going to create more insurance for the businesses. The business are the ones who get the majority of the ISO rating hits. Residents do to some degree, but it's the businesses because it takes more firefighters to take care of that. I don't speak to the police issues because that's not my side of the house, but Chief Hemmern's a great spokesman for them. And I'm not trying to take anything away from the police department, but I'm here to talk primarily about the fire department. And I think that something needs to be done. You all have gone through the history. You've sharpened your pencils. You've shown where you've cut the budget. And as you know, again, I've been involved, but many of the faces that show up here tonight are here to say no, but haven't offered any real solutions. You guys have come up with some good solutions. I support it and I encourage you to move forward with it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Terrell Blaylock. I live in the county and I own businesses in town. There's not a lot I can add to, to what's been said. We owning a restaurant, we're working on super thin margins. We, our volume is way down. People, people simply can't afford to go out. I'm, I'm sure most, if not all of you, when you, you and your spouse or who your significant other deciding to go out, say, "Yeah, we just don't want to spend that tonight." A few years ago, that wasn't the case for many of us. Didn't have to make that consideration. I've heard comments that, "Well, people in the lower socioeconomic group, if they don't want to pay the tax, they don't have to participate. They don't have to go out." I find that comment repugnant. Let Them Eat Cake comes to mind. I don't think that it's right for you to make that decision for people. What we see now and what we will see if this passes, there's a certain pool of people that will go out and eat on any given day. And all of us in the business, we fight for that customer. You pass this, you take another layer of people off. You're not going to affect the people selling pot downtown. You're not going to affect the people selling antiques. You're not going to affect anybody else, just the restaurants. You take that many customers off the table and we got to fight for a smaller and smaller piece of pie. Does that mean we have to lay a person off? Then you're responsible for that person losing their job? Does that mean we have to close the doors because the numbers get so small it just doesn't make any sense anymore? I don't mean to sound hyperbolic, but I, that's really where it's at. The numbers just aren't there to make it work. So I ask that you do not pass this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Josie. I am a county resident. I come to the city.
Can you pull the mic down a little closer? Thanks.
I come to the city to eat out and enjoy downtown. And I, in agreement with all the restaurant owners, yeah, the tip will go down if I have to pay a tax on my food that I'm eating there. And I probably won't eat out as often. We've already cut back on the amount of times we eat out just because of the economy and where it's at now. So I ask you not to increase our taxes, to possibly look at the general fund for funding the fire and safety for our city. Thank you.
Hello, Jamie Cartwright, local citizen, business owner. First of all, I think I probably speak for everybody here that supports the local police and fire. I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't. The biggest concern that I have is this is, you know, I hear everyone saying it's a meals tax. I think this, from what I read, this goes far beyond just a meals tax. And I think it affects everybody's grocery shopping as well because when I look at everything that you guys put on the board and I, I hear things like, "Well, the spirit of this is such." One term that comes to my mind is, I'm sure you've all heard, "Well, you got to pass the bill before you see what's in it." Well, I don't think the general population of this community fully understands everything that they're going to be taxed on. And I just think that that is one of the reasons why I think there needs to be more education to the public of everything that they're going to be taxed on when they do grow grocery shopping. One of the biggest segments in grocery stores is the prepared meals. Because they're finding that it's cheaper to buy a prepared meal than it is to make a meal at home. And they're now going to be going to think, "Well, I'm not going to pay a meal tax. I'm just going to go buy something in the store to bring home." Well, they're going to go there and they're going to get taxed on it. And I don't see the clarification on here of what's defined in a very clear way. And I think that that needs to be brought to the general public and I think this needs to be brought to a vote of the people.
Rika Brown, Grants Pass. I was hearing good news out of the county the other day. The sheriff managed to pass a tax district. And you should be looking at that, something much more normal for funding our police and firemen. And speaking of which, it is very vague in both the meals tax and the, what do you call it? Oh, public safety utility. That's not a utility. People and their equipment are not a utility. A utility has huge infrastructure and a huge overhead and very few people. But you're being very vague about what you're actually going to fund. Public safety, practically everything the city does has something to do with public safety. You should be having separate departments, separate funding for police and for fire because they are two very separate kinds of work. And you should only be funding those policemen and those firemen and their equipment if you're going for public safety funding. But no, forget the public safety. You already split up the departments. Go with each department. And don't be, when you were, were trying to pass this public safety utility last time, I read the ordinance and it included roads, sidewalks. You already have a.
Rika, the light is going off. Thank you.
Tax for that. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, public tonight that have gathered. Thank you so much for being here. My first thought is that we in November voted.
Can you let us know your name and whether or not you live in the city?
Oh, so sorry. I was, I'm a little nervous, so I'm a second time speaking. Michelle, I am a local business owner and a local resident of Grants Pass. In November, we passed through the voter's pamphlet, a levy to maintain current levels of public safety services in which it said 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, these would be funded. I am concerned and wondering where that funding went and why we are now putting this on the backs of our restaurants, our bars, our, me as a caterer, this, this number is going to be higher for some reason. I'd also like clarification on that. My husband and I have worked in the service industry since we were barely adults to be able to run our own restaurant so that we can be home with our children and be at their games and do the things we need to do and choose the things we want to, to work and support. And now that could all be compromised. And I'm looking for answers as to why and where this funding has gone and where this current funding you're asking for is going to be implemented and how we can track that and make sure that it is actually implemented where we need. I do know we need public safety. No one is going to say we don't because it's, it's a fear tactic, but it's always needed. The world is always going to continue to complete people and need more public safety. So we understand that. But where is it being allocated and why is it being put on the back of just one industry that is going to cripple our town? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Dahl. I have a business here in town. And never more so have I heard the words, "No good deed goes unpunished." You guys are stuck between a rock and a hard place. You have to figure out how we can keep our city services done the way they are done and improve upon them without the funding that we need. And unfortunately, my feeling is that when you tax just a certain portion of it, you erode the trust of the people because you're making us feel like it's our burden as restaurateurs, caterers, that we have to figure out somehow we're going to help you figure out how your budgets are supposed to be made. And when I have a deficiency in how much money I make on a thing, I don't get to come back and say, "Hey, I made the contract wrong. I didn't get as much as I should because the cost of something went up." I do understand you guys have to create budgets and you have to figure it out. But there has to be more transparency with this. When I write a contract for a catering, I have to line out what I'm charging you for everything. So when we say that we're here and some of us are trying to understand why, we would just like to see more transparency in how the money is being put towards these services. Because right now, if you put this tax in place without actually letting the people understand why or why we don't have a chance to vote in this, you're just going to erode the trust within the city. And then you're going to create a situation where what happens when we need more money further down the line? Are we going to increase this tax? Are we going to try and run another tax through the system here? You're not creating any situation of trust. And that's where we're sitting here right now, feeling distrustful of how this is all going to play out. I would ask that you just give us the opportunity to vote on this and give us more information so we know where we're supposed to be with this project. I believe firmly in the good law enforcement, good education, good fire services. These build stronger communities and this attracts other companies to want to come to us. But if we start to do these things where we're setting taxes in place without the people's backing of it, you're going to see companies not want to bring their companies here. And that's where we're at.
Thanks, James.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hello, Angela Padilla, citizen of the city. I own the Cuban restaurant, which you guys, I believe, are aware. I really have no rhyme or reason to kind of my notes here. I do want to say, you know, part of my coming up here, I was thinking you guys would be like, maybe to a lot of us, like, where were you when we were trying to make these decisions or what was going on? Honestly, I was at my restaurant. I have myself and one other employee at this point. I am a Cuban restaurant in Grants Pass and I am doing my best. And when I heard about this, I just was like, "Ah." Like, I'm not even sure, I mean, this winter, guys, I haven't paid myself in over a month. And before that, it was like 200 a week. So this was really discouraging to me. And I don't understand why just the food industry and the restaurants. I don't understand how that came to, you know, how you made that decision. Jay, Jay Meredith, he happens to be a friend of mine. He was what, the director of finance for the city for like 10 years. And you know, and I agree about people coming here and not having a solution. And I believe he sent you his document. I don't know if it's necessarily the right one, but I would ask you to maybe look it over and reconsider that. I agree with the whole, "We need safety. We need our police. We need..." I agree with all of it. But I don't believe that a food tax or a restaurant tax is the answer, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barry McCarthy. I'm a resident here in Grants Pass. And I don't envy the council for the decision that you're going to have to make eventually. Hopefully, it's the right one. Hopefully, it's one that we as voters can participate in. And I don't envy the passion I've heard tonight from these restaurant owners and these people that are going to be affected by it. This is the end of February. It's going, within a couple of months, we're going to know the results of all this. And what I want to appeal to are the citizens here tonight that are faced with, will be faced with whatever the decision is. We're all in this together. We all want fire protection. Everybody here in the council, you live here, you eat here, you are protected by the same people that we are. As such, when I hear that, "Well, I'll get even with them somehow. I just won't eat in Grants Pass anymore. I'll go out of town to eat so I could save 3% on a tax food bill." My wife and I went out the other night, knowing that this could, a couple of months from now, our bill's going to go up. Alcohol's not included. We have a cocktail with dinner. The entree for dinner would be about $35 the other night. 3% of that is just over a dollar. If the menu items went up 60 cents a piece, we'd be fine with that. We wouldn't say, "We're going to go to Medford to eat because it's 60 cents cheaper there." We would continue to eat here. So it's going to be up to us, whatever the decision is. We, the people here at Grants Pass, if we're going to continue to support our restaurants, they need us more now than ever, pay that 3% and go there as often as you can. And please support our town. Thank you.
My name is Brian Callahan and I live in Grants Pass. I have a family legacy in Ashland. We had Callahan's Restaurant many years. My dad started it back in 1947. We did the Save Mount Ashland Fund when Mount Ashland was going under, saved the mountain. It was all donations, no taxes. They passed the meals tax, which did not affect us, but it affected all of our competitors in town. Believe it or not, people will not go to some places. Not only that, but the locals moved away. Ashland is a hoity-toity town. It's a college town. It's got Shakespeare. We call it Little San Francisco. I brought my business to Grants Pass many years ago and have employees. And I'm part of a company here called Weekend Beer Company who employs a lot of employees. And a tax like this, if was voted on, then our customers could come to us and we could say, "It's not our fault. You guys voted this in and made it so." But for you guys, Ashland, trust me, Alan DeBoer is a friend of mine. He was the mayor there for many years. And government starts taking over and gets too much power and they lose the people. There's not many old families that live in Ashland anymore. They all left. They went to Phoenix, talent, and Grants Pass. And I don't want to move. I'd like to stay here. So if you guys could just put it to the vote and let the voters vote.
Hello, I'm Alan Masters. I've been living here for 45 years. My children were all born here. My grandchildren were all born here. I've been selling this city to the nation on radio stations all around the country for 30 years. Very proud to live here. Love this area. But as I see what's happening here today, I have to tell you, this is really sad to me because I've actually had for the first time the thought that if this passes, it's something wicked this way come. And if this passes, my shopping center that has 30 units, my building on Sixth Street, my residential units, my home, our ranch, it's all going for sale. My sister already moved to Texas, my brother to Florida. This is a bad day for Grants Pass, Oregon, if you guys vote on this without allowing actually the people to vote on their future. So I just want to say that my heart hurts for our little town here. You see all these people that are coming out that they don't know how to speak publicly. And you know, I've been speaking publicly almost all my life and my heart's beaten right now. My heart's beaten because this is so personal. It's embarrassing. You folks should let these people vote. And I'll say one thing in closing. A thousand ways if you want to, but not one if you don't. And if you say you can't, then you won't. Thank you. Thank you.
Del Aldridge, City of Grants Pass. I'm a military brat, moved all over the United States. I started my career down in California, and I came up to this beautiful town as a tourist. Your tourist dollars are gone. You know, the internet and all the postings with all the stuff in the parks and what's happening down, it's gone. You've taxed the people at the hotels. They're not filling up. They're not. Your tax dollars are down. You've seen that. I'm sure you've got it on your spreadsheets, that the people that go to the hotels are down. My fiance runs a restaurant. Every day, we got to run somebody off. I had a guy this morning on a wheelchair going door to door, opening up, trying to get money. And we went down to pay the county permit. It went up $250 in one year for 15-seat restaurant. $250 in one year. We asked them, "What did that just..." "Oh, we haven't raised it in the past." "What do you mean you haven't raised it in the past? This is the second year we've been doing it. We're signing a three-year lease next, in March. I don't know if we can make it. We're down to one employee. We had to lay off all employees in the winter because it's dead. And this summer, your tourist dollars are gone if you keep this disgrace of a city of these parks and everything." Now, when I see the police spend probably half their time in the parks and all the homelesses, that's where our money's disappearing at. Ashland's got it under control. They gave them a place to camp in the police station in front. We don't have that here. And we need to do something. Now, Ashland's going to stop the restaurant tax. So we're going to be the only city in Oregon to have that tax. Not right. We need to vote on it. These people need to vote on it. Just can't be you. You've got to figure another way. The water bill is ridiculous. I can't believe how much all the little things you put in there over the years, and you're adding more to it. It's just out of control. But please, look for another reason, another way. Do something different. This restaurant tax is not what you need. Get the voters to vote on it.
Is there anybody else here who was wanting to speak?
Hi. My name's Chris Walker. I am a citizen in Grants Pass and business owner. I own True Juice Organics, 124 Northwest D Street. And, yeah, I just want to say, you know, thank you all for being here. And I just had my four-year anniversary. We're a health and arts hub right in downtown. I do a lot of community service. We do a lot of free classes for the community. I'm coaching Boys and Girls Club Basketball right now. And it's just been really hard. And it's hard to even say that because I'm always, attitude is everything, but it's just been declining and declining and declining. And it's strictly just because as other businesses are going down, and then the fees to bring in the produce from Eugene and Portland is going up because the best, one of the best juice bars in Ashland just went out of business, Raw. They had to stop delivering there, and then their orders in Ashland cut. So everything's just going up, and I'm just, I'm getting really nervous because I love Grants Pass. I love my community. I live very simple. And, you know, like I heard a lot of business owners say, "I'm not really paying myself too much." And it kind of hurts to even say that. But the reality, it's just hard, and I'm really trying my best. And I don't think this is going to help, and I don't want to have to lose, you know? And I just want to give it my all. And I'm just really asking that we just do our best and we really listen. And we, you know, I appreciate the police. They've really helped me over the last couple of years with a lot of personal things, and I'm really thankful. But I really think there's a different way to do this, and I'm hoping that we could come together as a team and, you know, find different solutions. And I really don't want our local town and our small businesses to hurt even more. So let's just do what we can with what we got, and let's figure something out. Thank you.
Jay Meredith is on the phone, and then we'll come back to people in the room. Go ahead, Jay.
Good evening. Jay Meredith. I am a resident of the city. Thanks for allowing me to speak by phone this evening. I think it's, I think it's pretty clear by now, or should be pretty clear by now, that a sales tax or a restaurant tax is just not feasible. It's just not, it's not going to be feasible to implement. So again, that brings us back to, well, how do we get police and fire the support that they need? I've shown you over the last month, and I am a CPA, and so I'm, you know, I'm working 70 hours a week this time of year. But I thought it was very important to try to show the council that financially, you can make this work with only a modest utility fee alone. So I really ask you to unanimously just put the idea of a sales tax away. And please do approve the public safety utility fee ordinance tonight. But I ask for, ask for one minor modification. So the financial plan that I've shown you, and I've answered questions from the councilors that had some questions about that, because the city's general fund is more financially healthy than what you had planned on in the last couple of budget years, you have the financial flexibility to start with a modest utility fee and put the idea of the restaurant tax to bed. But I ask for one change in the utility ordinance. You can please go ahead and pass it tonight if you're ready to do so. But I ask that you do not approve the fee resolution that goes with that because I think there's some minor modifications that you can make to the fee resolution, you know, what the different fee categories are, to make it a little bit more fair for the smallest of businesses in Grants Pass. So I think you need to expand the commercial A category into two additional categories because 91% of the units filled out are falling in that commercial A category. And so, which means the smallest of businesses are getting penalized a little bit.
Jay, that's the red light.
Okay. Thank you. Please, please take your time in approving the fee ordinance.
Jay, Jay, your time's up.
Thank you.
All right. Next.
My name's Lori, and I live in Colonial Valley. And I wanted to point out something. I've been listening to everyone here. I love the police. I love and support the fire department. We need them very badly. And I remember back in the day, a gentleman president named Ronald Reagan, when we were in the midst of a recession, what did he do? He reduced taxes. And what did that do? That increased the income to the country. And I'm recommending that you look at, where can you cut taxes and take a lot of burden off of these people? Free up some money so that you'll get more revenue in.
Is there anybody else who was wanting to speak tonight? All right.
Hello, council members. My name's Daniel Finney. I am a resident of Josephine County. I've moved, I've lived here for about four years now. And admittedly, in the time that I've lived here, I haven't even eaten out very much, honestly, because of the economy, as a lot of these business owners have said. You know, their numbers are down. The margins are already tight enough. Supply chain is kind of messed up. I'm sure that many of you in your own personal lives, and I know many of the people in this room, have felt the effects of that. And I will go ahead and add that, of course, we all are, you know, want public safety and we want law enforcement. But as you look around the town, as many people have said, it's changed dramatically in the four years that I've lived here. And I don't think a 3% tax is going to really rectify that problem. I remember being a small child and going out to eat with my family, and it was a big deal as we grew up lower middle class. And I know that a lot of the residents of this county and of Grants Pass are not very financially stable or well off. And that being said, you know, a lot of these kids aren't going to get to experience that. Think about little kids not going out to eat with their family and sitting across the table and experiencing what it's like to interact with a waiter, you know? And seeing their dad spend his hard-earned money, or their mother spend their hard-earned money to pay for the tab and take them out for a nice evening, you know? 3% doesn't seem like very much, but it's not even going to be just the business owners. It's going to be the people that go out to eat and that, you know, times are very hard right now. So I would recommend reconsidering this and trying to cut the budget in other places to accommodate the fees needed for our first responders. Thank you.
Is anybody else wanting to speak to?
Hi. My name's Kelly Johnson. I'm a resident of Grants Pass. I have always held police and fire way up here. We all need them. Our community needs them. There's no doubt about it. We've been able to fund them through various taxes for all these years. What's wrong now? You've taken the money and used it for something else. Every time you take the money and use it for something else, you come up with a new category you want us to pay new taxes to, to fund these people. They need the money, yeah. Reallocate what you've got. Show us your accountability. Where's the money going to? Right now, you're putting the burden on these people, the hotel people, for people going out to dinner. How is that fair? You're making a select amount of people pay for what our whole town needs? It's absurd. Having a tax is a slippery slope. You're going to have sales tax for this. We're going to get close to having sales tax for everything. Sales tax and stuff never goes away. It only increases. And I just hope you reconsider. I'm not sure how you can get away with doing this without the vote of the people around here, but I guess that's why you're the government.
Was there anybody else wanting to speak? All right. I'm going to close a public comment on our public safety discussion, funding discussion here. I wanted to take a minute to answer a few questions that came up along the way. Regarding the budget and transparency issues, the city's budget is available online. You can actually download both this year's and, I think, about the past 10 years or so. It's a pretty substantial document, but I personally find it pretty easy to read if you want to go through it. It's about 385 pages, I think, which I was having a conversation with some people on Nextdoor, an online platform, the other day, and they were complaining about the length of it. Your city council folks have read that and sat through meetings where they studied that. We also have a city budget committee that will meet multiple times during the month of May to review the budget. You can watch those videos online from last year. You can watch online this year. It's extremely transparent. You know, whether or not you agree with different decisions that are made, I think, is a question. But you can find all the information, where the money comes in, where it goes out. The levy that was approved again last November, absolutely all of that money is going to public safety. And the Public Safety Division is our police, fire, and dispatch. So it's not going to roads or sidewalks, as someone said. That levy brings in between $6 and $7 million a year. We also dedicate all of your property taxes that you pay for the City of Grants Pass go to funding the Public Safety Division. So between your permanent property tax rate and that $1.79 levy, absolutely all of that is going to fund public safety. It's about $30 million a year to fund our Public Safety Division, which has about half of our city's staff. Unfortunately, here in the state of Oregon, back in the '90s, there were some property tax reforms that put a cap on how much property tax, taxes could increase annually, and it's 3% a year essentially. So that's what our limit is. We don't get income tax. I heard somebody say that about 25% of their income goes to taxes. That's true. The state and federal government takes that money. The city does not have an income tax. We have property tax. This option before the council tonight, both the sales tax, a general sales tax, a restaurant tax, a utility fee, there's different options that are available to the council to implement, but there are some that also aren't. I know that some people, I don't know if anyone did tonight, but mentioned marijuana tax. We do get some marijuana tax back here in the City of Grants Pass. That money does also go to help fund public safety. So there are a number of ways that we get money, and it's all there in the document. You don't have to read all 385 pages. It's indexed really nicely, and you can just find the public safety section. The restaurant tax or food and beverage, prepared food and beverage tax that is being considered tonight, and I don't know where we'll go with this, but it's absolutely not a tax on restaurants. It's a tax that would be paid by the customers, a sales tax that would be paid by the customers going to the restaurants. It's not a tax on groceries. I know that there's some things at grocery stores that are like a cooked chicken would be charged, a raw chicken would not. You know, there's going to be a few little things like that, but for the most part, it's not your groceries. It's not vague. It's all written out. There will be a couple odds and ends, things that come up, you know? Is it prepared? Is it not? In a few situations, but we can work through that if needed. I think a big question tonight, since I have attention of all these restaurateurs, and I appreciate that you came down tonight because I know it's hard for you to get away in the evenings. The city council's been talking about this for several years. In fact, I mean, they've probably been talking about it for 30 years, long before any of us were here, as this problem has been growing. But we've been deeply studying this issue. And so I know so many people have said, you know, "Look for another way. There's got to be another way." And there are other ways. There's no doubt about it. They have studied and come to some, you know, focus areas. And this is where we've ended up. And it's possible to, for the council to implement a tax without a vote of the people. It's also possible for the council to decide to send something to a vote of the people. Both are legal options. The reason, I think, why we have focused in on restaurants is because it does give people some discretion. And the other main option that we are reviewing tonight is a utility fee. And what that does is it puts a fee on people's water bills. It will put it on the bill of the restaurants. So restaurants will pay more on their utility bill. It will pay, people will pay more at their houses. And so I think you have to keep in mind, if somebody's water bill at their house goes up $10 or $15 or $30, that also influences how much they can eat at the restaurant. So pretty much everybody here tonight has been, you know, speaking out on behalf of the restaurants, but I just want to put into context, that's why we're even considering the restaurant tax, is because putting it on people's utility bill, they have no choice. If it's $15, they just have to pay the $15. Whereas at a restaurant, they can choose, you know, to spend a little less if they, you know, if they only have 20 bucks in their pocket and they have to keep it under 20 or whatever. Sometimes we make those choices. But one advantage of the restaurant tax is also that it allows people who are county residents or tourists to also pay the tax. And so it shares those costs with people outside the city. And I know some people who live in the county, you know, don't like that, but I think all of you who live in the city and those of you who pay utility bills for your businesses should like that because it's, that's the whole goal of it, is to help spread the cost so that it's not just city utility rate payers who are paying. So like I said, I don't know exactly where tonight's discussion will go or what will get implemented or won't, but I want you to all know that we have been thoughtful about this and will continue to do so. I know it's been a really tough discussion, and people have, on the council, have, you know, changed their minds, and there's different benefits, different ways that you look at it. We would not be the only city. I want to, somebody else made a comment. There are three other cities in Oregon right now that have a food and beverage tax, Ashland, Cannon Beach, and Yohuts. And the Ashland tax is set to sunset right now in the year 2030. So if I had to place a bet, I'd say they extend it, but they have six years to work on that problem. And I know council's probably antsy to get in on this conversation. Duane asked a little while ago, so I'm going to let Duane go first, and then I'll let councilors in the room, and we will hopefully find some direction on what we're going to do here with this. So Duane, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I will try to go through my notes because you answered some of the things I was going to speak about. So, you know, I agree with a lot of things that the people are saying, you know, what is the role of the government's public safety? Keep law order, protect people when that moment arises. We have talked about this, and you just said this, Mayor, that, you know, we've talked about this for years. We've talked about this for probably a decade or more. The cost of PERS, Pay, Leave, Oregon, wages, inflation have impacted the budget. We've had public meetings. We've asked people to come and answer questions, submit their questions. These meetings are recorded, just like you said, Mayor. They're put online for people to view at any time. Before this, I went on YouTube, and all our meetings are there. They are not deleted. All those meetings are available for everyone to weigh in. All those meetings are available for everyone to weigh in. You know, we've talked about how the city has cut its budget for the past few years. We have cut the budget. I want people to understand that. We have asked people to, you know, weigh in, give us options. If there's things they like and don't like. My question to people is, do you want us to get rid of other things? You know, we could get rid of pools and parks and other entities if that's what you want us to do. I'm all for those things. We could sell transfer ownership of those things. Maybe we should do a separate tax on those things for, you know, instead of just use the general fund just to pay for law enforcement and public safety, those areas. And the last thing, you know, the council was told by the mayor last time that we have a choice. We can, if we do a utility, that she would veto it. And we must do something to sales tax. And I respect the mayor for at least telling us that was her views. I don't agree with her, but that was her views. And I appreciate that her at least giving us the option. So we have two options tonight. We can do the utility fee, or we can do a utility fee and some kind of tax that probably will be, will go to the public, and they're going to override us and say, no, you're not taxing us. Because they've done that for several years. They've told us no sales tax. We do not want a sales tax in our city, our county. But I have to agree with Jay Merritt. I believe there is a utility fee option that's small enough to have the less impact. I would be okay with that. I think that is the best option for now. But again, anything more than that, I want the voters to weigh in. If we're going to do a sales tax or anything like that, a gas tax, food and beverage tax, it needs to go to the voters. I've told people that. I do not feel comfortable without putting something to the voters. And I just want, another thing is, you know, Cannon Beach, they sent their prepared food tax to the voters in 2021, and it passed, actually. So I believe the voters need to weigh in, and that's where I'm going to stay tonight. And I think I'll listen to the rest of me and vote after that. Thank you.
Valerie. Okay, being the educator that I am, I always have to clarify a few things. And one of the things that was discussed, and I know John came up and talked about, and I heard a lot about the general fund and us not doing the police first. Well, the general fund has the police and fire. It has the parks. It has community development. And I think that's pretty much it. That's it. That's it. So community development is housing. So, I don't know. I mean, I think we're in a housing crisis, and we all know that. So if we close down community development and we don't give out permits and we don't get any building done, we're shooting ourselves in the foot because we know that's a real big part of the problem that we have even with homeless people is housing. It's a crisis. So that doesn't make a lot of sense. Parks, well, right now, our parks are not really pretty. We all know that. And we can't even say the word parks without getting attacked in public. That's just kind of the reality. So the, you know, cutting parks right now, I mean, do you know how many times they're out there cleaning up and putting sprinklers back together and making it, trying to make it work? Our parks are in a bad place right now, and we know that. But I can't see reducing the number of parks people out there because they're working their fannies off right now just to try to keep our parks to survive. So I don't see, I mean, the city has to pass a budget every year. And we have to be audited every year. And I keep hearing about, we have to stand up and do our budget. Do you have to be audited every year to make sure that your money's going where you say it's going? Because there'd be a whole lot of people who'd be in trouble if they were audited every year. I'll also tell you that government finances work different than regular finances. We can't take water money and reduce our water budget and shove it over to the police. We can't do it. We can't do it. We can't take transportation money that's coming from ODOT, which is where the majority of our money comes from, is ODOT and our transportation fee. If we collect it as a transportation fee, we have to show that money is going to transportation. We can't say, well, let's get rid of those street workers. We don't need to have the potholes filled. We'd rather have police and fire. We can't do it. So there are things that happen in a government budget that have to happen in the government budget. And it's not just like your budget. I have a son-in-law who is a CEO and has been a CFO. I have a son who is an accounting person. They don't like to look at my city budget book and go over it with me because it doesn't make any sense to them because it doesn't make any sense that they can't just move things around. But that's how government works, and that's just how it is. So it's not the same as just, well, just get rid of here or get rid of there. That's not how it works. And honestly, our biggest priority is police and fire. The biggest budget is police and fire and personnel. So over the last eight years I've been on the council, every year I'm on the part of the budget committee. Every year, we go through the budgeting, we go through all that. And you're right, about 2016 is when we started realizing we had an issue coming up. We tried a gas tax, it was voted down. That would have made so much sense. That would have taken $5 off your water bill or $6 off your water bill. But you didn't want it because you didn't want us to have a gas tax in this community. We tried to raise the levy by 10 cents. Couldn't do it. Nope, that would just be too hard to raise 10 cents for our levy. Yeah, we went out for a sales tax. We've gone out for everything. We went out for a fire district because a lot of people want the police and fire separated. We did do that. So now we have police and fire. But guess what? They're scrambling for the same funds because we didn't ever give a fire district the money they needed to go. Do you want to know how many fire districts there are in even southern Oregon? Quite a few. If you go to Medford, Central Point, Jacksonville, White City, all of those areas, they all have fire districts on top of their police districts, which means they're paying for the police and they're paying separately for fire. We don't do that. We have one pot of money. So we are kind of our own little island here. We need our police and fire. And I've heard nobody say, please, cut more officers. You have to know how thin our officers are. The last two years, okay, I'll just go back. 2016 is where we saw it coming. We tried to pass things, we tried to pass things. It didn't happen. Okay, so come to 2021 after the pandemic, guess what? We were in real, so we had to cut. We cut $1.2 million in one year. And we did everything we could. We learned how to get more money in interest. We've done so many things around to bring in more revenue. But nobody ever hears about that because nobody comes to the meeting unless we say tax. Because it doesn't bother you. You're busy going about your life, and we get that. You know, I was a school teacher for 25 years. I didn't pay attention because I was immersed in teaching and raising my family. I get it. But all this stuff goes on behind the scenes. And so then, next year, a year and a half later, we had to cut another $1.9 million. Well, we don't have the option of raising our prices. We don't. We can't go and say, oh, whoops, we're not cutting anymore. We tried to go out and raise taxes. We tried to go out and get something. But we, everything we do, we have to ask. 3% is what we're allowed. Well, you know, and I know that inflation has been way over 3% for the last several years. Well, guess where we're hitting hard? Our police and our fire. We lost three firefighters in this last year to Medford. Three. We don't have that many, we only, we don't have that many officers. So three of them have gone. Somebody said, well, you know, something, we should just live within our budget, and that's what it is. Why is that a problem? This is why it's a problem. Because we can train them, and they go to Medford, and they get paid, and they have stability. And they don't have to put up with being called back to work three or four times a week because there's not enough officers. When you and your restaurant run out, you can fill in. I'm sure Warren is filled in when he's needed to, too, because that's where our police officers are. They're getting called back, and it's not a choice to come back. They have to come back because they're a public servant. They're getting called back three or four times a week. They have families. They have to work. They don't have a choice. So those are the sorts of things that we, as a city, are dealing with. And yes, we have made cuts. We've made almost $4 million worth of cuts, and we don't really have anywhere else to cut. Last time, we cut the money that we're putting forth for police and fire engines and trucks. Couple years down the road, we're going to really be bad, sorry, when we don't have that equipment. We're actually paying less in taxes than we were in 2019. If you remember, in 2010, we had a levy, a bond, for the two fire stations and three fire trucks. That was in 2010, right? Well, here we are. Last year, I think we went to replace one of the fire trucks. It's going to be like $800,000,000. And we realized, okay, well, it's been in service for a long time. We really need to start replacing them. So then we went out a few months later to say, well, maybe we need to look at what the price of two is. It was over $1.5 million within three months. So you don't think those prices are going up, too? And we have to look out far ahead. We have to look beyond just now. We have to say, well, you're going to need trucks down the road because fire trucks don't last forever. I had somebody who was actually here at a business meeting I was at the other day. They said, why do so many fire trucks show up when somebody's having a heart attack or something's going on in our community? And I got, for the first time, I really heard the answer. They have to because we're understaffed. The only thing they can drive is a fire truck. We don't have enough people. We are understaffed and have been for years. We have two firefighters to a fire engine. The standard in southern Oregon, most other fires, is three. So we are skating by. And as far as the ISO goes, that's very true. If our ISO rate falls, your insurance goes up. And some of you have seen that who live just in wildfire areas. They can drop you. They don't have to pay. Your insurance rates are going to go up. So we also know that. And so what we have to do is we have to fund public safety at a level to keep us safe, and we have to do something. So I personally, and I hear all these people coming now when we say the word tax, say, let's put it on the ballot. Because I think that if we really go out in the community and people really knew where we were and people were going to show up at the meetings when we talked about where we are and why we're here, I want you to be here because I really want you to know. I've wanted you to know for eight years. But then I've been into it because that's where I put my life. You haven't, I get it. But come to the plate. Come to the plate because we're here at the 11th hour. And we are to a point where we're not going to be able to keep you safe. And if you think businesses are going to stick around when we lose more officers, they're not. I've known a lot of people that have left already. We've got, we had, let's see, we had 58 officers in 2019 when Warren got here. We have 56 now. That was before Measure 110. That was before the injunction. You don't think our police officers are working hard out there? I think they are. And I think they're leaving. And they're going into work at the DMV, and they're going to workplaces because they are strung out and they're tired. We can't, it's really hard. Back in 2018, we had like 115 firefighters come to apply. We're lucky now if we get 15. They don't want to go into the business. So if you don't pay them, they're not coming. So if you think we'll have fire if we don't stay at a level that's competitive, I wouldn't. They're going to, we train them, they go. So that's what we have to look at. We have to look at recruitment, and we have to look at rekeeping them here. And that costs money. And for everybody that says, I support police, I support police, I support police, well, you know something? I think back in the years of the, back during COVID, the city came up with some money, and you know something? They gave a lot of money to a lot of businesses because they were hurting. And I was so proud at that time because when they needed something, the city had some resources. And you know what they did? They stepped to the plate because they thought it was important to help businesses. We have grants. We have things that we can only use for that, and we will do that for you. But now that we need help, we need your help. And, you know, I did a little research last night. There are other cities, Bend, they have an economic improvement district. And you know what that is? It's a group of businesses downtown that work with the community, and they help pay for police to keep their businesses safe because they realize that's a priority. So I do think we have options. I was at the roadmap, and I think I saw a lot of you people there, businesses, excited, let's get something going downtown. I want to see something downtown. So personally, I don't want to tax you without a vote. I don't. I want my police and fire to be there, and I'm willing to boot to a utility tax to get us there. And yes, that is going to affect all of you business people as well as citizens and the nonprofits and people who haven't been paying for public safety. But come to the table. Let's find ways to reduce it. Let's look at a economic improvement district. Let's look at something that can help us keep our public safety. Because without public safety, you have nothing. And right now, they're strung out. They need us, and they're pleading with us to say, we can't do it anymore. We can't be called back over and over again. We are thin as it goes. And so, yes, let's all step forward to support public safety and do that by coming forward and continuing to come forward when it's just not a tax that's coming, running through your business, but is a way to make our community better. So my solution would be the utility tax and to put it on the ballot to go further with any other tax.
Joel.
So I think it's important that we repeat what we heard tonight because you folks didn't come here just to be entertained by us. And I appreciate you listening to us because that's probably harder than for us to listen to you because we're up here. A couple of things I heard was, you know, with the tax, what keeps us from going up to 10%? That would have to be an official council action that would be subject to further public review. And at this point in time, it would be speculation. What happens if it went back down to 1%? And so it's hard to deal with that comment because that's in the future. We don't even, I mean, we may not even need a sales tax in the future. Who knows? Probably already mentioned, what did you do with all that money? All the property tax? Well, it all went to public safety. And with the expenses there, it's going. Then I heard there's a failure in budget. And for the last two years, we've reduced the budget both years and reduced positions. There's been a lot of vacant positions. Some of them were fire and police. But there was park positions as well that were reduced. And even with those reductions, and they were in the millions of dollars, the percentage impact on the general fund went up. impact on the general fund went up. So it's, so there is a budget failure, I guess. It's not one that we didn't realize was coming. And it's one we're trying to deal with. And that's why we're here today, talking with you. Because it's been a high priority in our strategic planning for the last two years. It was the highest priority. And we need to solve it, plain and simple. And so how do you solve it? Well, we work together and solve it. Education on tax, I don't know every, I heard people say, well, I don't know everything that's going on. And, and I would join you in that. I don't know everything that's going on. I probably know a little bit more than you because I'm on this side. But we can do a better job with that. And I would also say that it probably takes some effort on your part to, to look at what the information is that's out there. Because there is a lot of information out there. And if you want some of that, you can see me afterwards. And I got a folder this thick of information of what's, we've discussed the last two years. We do have a separate budget for fire and police. You know how much we spend for fire and how much we spend for police. There was a comment that, well, you need to separate those budgets. One of the things is that we cut was, and it is a budget failure. We, we don't have replacement funds now for our equipment, as was mentioned earlier. Because we cut it out because it didn't affect services today. And so your cop cars and your fire engines, we're not putting a sinking fund. You know how the concept of a sinking fund? So you can make hamburgers again tomorrow and those good onion rings. We don't have that. Okay? We didn't, we haven't made that contribution. So it is a budget failure. The budget failure is based on having to say, well, we're gonna keep the service we got and we're gonna pay the piper down the road. Trust. So I, how do I build trust? I build trust with my wife by listening to her. And not saying anything. So I try to model that up here and try to listen to you and repeat back what I heard you say. It doesn't mean that my wife is always right. She is most of the time. But, you know, but, but to listen to each other with respect builds trust. And you folks are doing that, which is great. Cuts and the money didn't go somewhere else. It went to public safety. So let's get down to the, to the business of what we're here for. Jay talked about, in category A with a, you can call it a utility fee for lack of a better word. It's a public safety fee on the utility bill. There's one category, category A, that has 80% of the businesses on there. And it's from small businesses to large businesses and they all pay the same rate. That's probably not something that we want to do. We probably want to divide that at least into two categories. So the small businesses pay less than the larger businesses. And how that works out, I'm not sure. But that's something we need to figure out. The other thing that, as we go forward, we can pass tonight, public fee on your utility bill. And then put the, the, the sales tax on restaurant bill up for a vote. And, and one of the ways we could do that, that would assure that we don't make stupid decisions in the budget, we don't have budget failures, is to increase the utility fee a little bit. And then if you pass, if you folks decide to pass the restaurant tax, we'll reduce the utility fee. And that would have to be part of, a part of the language. And then you can decide what you want to do. Do you want to pay for it on your utility fee? Or do you want to pay for it as a restaurant tax? I, I feel a little goosey. Because I know, I, I feel in my heart for the business owners. And I know the business owners are a minority in the community. They turned out tonight, which was great. And, and they're, and they're a great industry. But I don't know how well you compete in, in an election. And, and there'd be a lot of other people that vote to protect their pocketbook that might put it on yours. I don't know. But we'll, we'll see, we can see how that goes. Anyway, that's what I personally favor. And thank you for coming. And thank you even more for listening. And if you have a question or something like that, I, I got things I need to do, but you can call me too. So I can give you my phone number and I'll tell you what I know and what I don't know. And I'll listen to you to build trust. Okay? Thank you.
Sarah, this is Rob. Just making sure you can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you. Because earlier, we had a problem. I wasn't, the audio didn't work. So I'm a little nervous. I don't want to cut the line. Somebody else had their hand up longer. They can-
Nope. Perfect timing. Go for it.
Okay. I'd just like to make a few comments. I have to say that Valerie's few minutes was extremely eloquent. And I agreed with virtually everything 100%. And I, I have to say that there's, it's, there's been so much information that's been disseminated by the city, by the city council, through every means that we've had at our disposal, whether it's, whether it's focused meetings, question answer, whether it's in our budget book, on our website, it's all out there. And it's, it's almost impossible for the city council to take responsibility for the fact that people still feel that they are under, undereducated on this. So they don't understand parts of it. We put it out there and Valerie really laid out all of that. I, I would also like to, I think, I think it was the mayor who mentioned, I mean, for, across along this line, for $15 of a utility fee, I mean, that would basically be the equivalent, $15 in a month, of someone going to a restaurant and paying a 3% restaurant tax on five different $100 meals in that same month. So, you know, the public, you know, having less money to spend at a restaurant is going to happen, no matter what funding source, the city council were to try to, to draw from. And if we don't draw from some source, then we, we know what the answer's going to be. A lot doesn't, a lot of people don't believe that we've already cut the budget twice in the last three years, $2 million each time. But the fact is, we'll have less police and fire. And we'll have less police and fire moving forward. As less, as Valerie pointed out, less police and firemen even apply for jobs across the country. Then we become, you know, less desirable because we can't pay competing wages. So one way or another, we, we either have to lose police and fire, we're gonna have to come up with some, some money, one way or another. And, you know, at $15 a utility fee, if that was somebody's suggestion to, to spare the restaurant business, the, you know, having to collect that tax, well, that's still going to reduce the disposable income that the potential restaurant owners have to spend. And, you know, one thing that kind of irks me a little bit, and, you know, we hear from many restaurant owners tonight that, oh, you know, let's not put this all on one, one industry. Well, quite frankly, many of those same people said the exact same thing about the general sales tax that would have put it on all of the industries. And whether that's Orla, whether that's some of the influential restaurant owners in town, own some big places, they all said, oh my goodness, you know, you can't put it on one industry. They were just as adamant to not put it on any industry or all of the industries combined. So I just have a hard time, you know, really, that doesn't sink in very far beneath my skin because it doesn't sound genuine to me. When they say, don't put it on one industry, they were equally against putting it on all the businesses. And everyone knows that because it's, it's on the record. So I feel bad that, you know, it would be potentially one industry that would be act as tax collectors. But I know that it's, for people that can afford to go out to eat regularly, it's not a real large amount of money. And I know that one person who spoke tonight from the audience has actually emailed me privately and said that, you know, he would frequent restaurants in, in Merlin and so on and so forth. And, and it's not because he, he can't afford the restaurant tax. I'm just basing that on the fact that he's got a large house on the river and he's a, he's a professional and he's, he's seems to be well-employed and all that. And has made mention of that several times. But one other gentleman tonight, and then I'm gonna finish, he made, he made the point. And, and I'm, I'm gonna paraphrase. Essentially, everyone in that audience, you know, has control over whether or not they continue to support the local restaurants. And if for whatever reason they don't, out of spite or to teach some counselor or some group of counselors or city hall a lesson, you know, their negative, their negative prophecies may come true. But that's what one gentleman said tonight, and I think it's a really good point. There are very few people who actually frequent and go out to restaurants who, you know, can't afford $1.50 on $50 worth of restaurant food. And if they chose not to do that in Grand Pass, out of spite, so to speak, that would be their choice. And their negative prophecy could come true. But they, they also can choose to support our local restaurants. They could even choose to go out more often, some people, just to support the local restaurants, who would be the tax collectors here. That's really whether or not someone wants to take essentially, it, whether or not they want to take responsibility for their attitude towards it. And that's their choice. I'm not saying that they have to. But they could, they could choose to go out to eat less. They could choose to go out to eat more. And I'm talking about the people that can afford to go out to eat comfortably, which is most restaurant, most restaurant customers. Those people can choose to, to not frequent restaurants any longer, or they can choose to keep their same buying patterns. It's kind of up to them. But that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Rick?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting past nine o'clock.
Oh, thank you. Seconded by Vanessa. All in favor of extending the meeting past nine? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we'll extend the meeting. He always keeps us in check. I thought you were ready to talk, Rick. Vanessa?
I don't want to rehash too much of what has already been stated, but I think it's really crucial that we're all on the same page. This community is unfortunately at a fork in the road right now with our public safety services. We can either choose to do nothing and lose police and firefighters, or we can choose to raise revenues to continue the growth of our, our population. Essentially, those are the two options that we have. So in approaching this discussion in the last three years, it is worth reiterating that we have conducted two separate rounds of budget cuts. Those have been to the tunes of millions of dollars. During those discussions, we had, there was a mention of shutting down a fire station. We only have three in this community. They are strategically placed in a triangle so that they can get to you and your family and your business as quickly as possible. So that would have drastically increased the response time that they have to you. Last fall, we had the fire chief quit. One of the reasons citing was a lack of stable funding for the fire department. We have, burnout is high, morale is low. We have a growing population in this community. We, we are witnessing in real time the changing landscape and public, public space use. And we have state mandates, unfortunately, that are out of our control, such as PERS and healthcare costs. So with those considerations, we, in order to educate the community, last year in 2023, we've talked about this for several years, but just last year, almost every month, we've had a meeting on this topic. We created a really in-depth website online that can be accessed anywhere at any time. And it goes through almost too much information as to how we got here, the options that are available to us to raise the amount of revenue that we need. We need about $4.8 million per year. So we need really specific options. When people say, do something else, we need something that would raise $4.8 million. So we need a really massive solution. Unfortunately, I'm afraid an economic improvement district would not fall into that category. I did look and, and see that Bend's is only about a half a million dollars a year and they have a much larger tax base than we do. So that would not meet the threshold of what our needs are. Last fall, we participated, our, our city councilors participated in the Chamber of Commerce forum about the levy. And we were really clear at that time that the levy would not completely cover the needs of our public safety services. We've held a survey. And just last month, we held a community listening forum. So we really have touched on every avenue, trying to get this information out to the community of how we got here and how we move forward. So we do know that we need about $4.8 million a year annually. That's the, that is the difference that we're seeing in our current revenues and expenditures. And so that leaves us with about three options. That's the sales tax, that's a food and beverage tax, or that's a utility fee. Now, we know that the sales tax is, you know, the most unpopular, certainly in our community. Although technically, it is the most equitable mechanism in terms of using disposable income. The utility fee has only about 13,000 utility accounts. So if we were to put this burden on the utility fee entirely, only about a third of our community would be paying for citywide services. We know that that's deeply inequitable. However, that does capture some of the nonprofits that currently aren't paying anything. And then we're left with the food and beverage tax, which I do believe is a middle of those two. It does have the potential to expand the taxation across many user groups. We're not putting it just on the 13,000 utility accounts. We are capturing tourist dollars. We are capturing out of county dollars, individuals that live in the county. And it is a pass-through tax for restaurants. I completely hear what restaurant owners are saying and restaurant workers are saying that the last couple of years have been hard. This is not a decision that this council is making lightly. With any of those options, we have worked these numbers over and over and over the last few years because we know that no matter what decision we make, it's gonna be very difficult. And there will be groups that are unhappy. So for all of those reasons stated, I do support the ordinances written this evening, implementing utility fee and food and beverage tax at 3%.
Further discussion? Bright? No? Wasn't sure if that was a hand.
Sure. I've done a lot of listening tonight. Thank you, everyone that has spoken. Thankfully, council has already said a lot, a lot of the things that I was gonna mention. So I don't have to speak as long. I don't need to repeat what they've said. But we take no joy in, in trying to figure out this, the solution to this problem. Because no matter what solution we pick, it's going to negatively impact some segment of the community. And there's really no way around that for us. And so we're stuck in, in between a rock and a hard place, trying to figure out what is the best solution. And there isn't a best solution. I mean, I guess it depends who you ask what the best solution is. I was advocating for a general sales tax because it would spread the burden of funding over the largest number of people. Where on the other end, as Vanessa mentioned, the utility bill fee spreads it over the fewest number of people. So those people all have to pay more per person. And the utility fee, or the utility bill is already riddled with fees. We, we already get complaints about the utility bill and how much that costs. So, so this is really hard. We're, we're volunteers. We don't get paid. We, we obviously live in the community. If we vote to implement food and beverage tax, you know, I mean, I've, I've friends in this audience that own restaurants and own businesses that would be negatively impacted, that have spoken tonight. This is extremely difficult. I, I would almost, I don't want to say I would be embarrassed, but it would be, it would be, it's gonna be more difficult for me to go out to restaurants, knowing that I have put this burden on them. Because I know that they're gonna look at me negatively for doing this to them. So this is really hard. The utility fee, you know, our constituents pay that. And, and pretty much everyone in this room is our constituents. But the, the problem with the utility fee is that no matter how much you make, whether you're rich, whether you're poor, you have to pay it. You have to pay the same amount, whether you're a millionaire or whether you're destitute. And if you don't pay it, your water, your water gets shut off. So it's very rigid. It's very inequitable. So personally, I am very much against putting it on the utility fee because it is not an equitable solution. And it spreads the burden over the fewest number of people. You say the word sales tax, people automatically, you know, it's a nonstarter. Even though, in theory, it's the best solution because it spreads the burden over the largest number of people. So, so what we have now is this hybrid, put part of it on the food and beverage, put part of it on the utility fee, which is our effort to try to come to the best compromise we can with the tools we have available, given the problem and the size of the problem we have. So I don't want to target one industry. I know the restaurant industry is hurting. So, yeah, this is hard. And we're doing the best we can.
DJ, then Valerie?
I suppose I'll get in here. I'm not willing to implement a transactional tax, food and beverage, or general sales tax. What I am willing to do is what is absolutely necessary at this point, and that is not lose officers or firefighters. And I'm willing to do that through the utility fee. Unfortunately, that does not get us in close to a permanent solution. But given that resolve that I have, I think we can readily anticipate putting on the ballot a proposal of some tax. Because the fact of the matter is, 100% of our property taxes, 100% of the 179, doesn't cut it anymore. If we don't garner new revenue, we will lose services. And that's just not acceptable. I think we can all agree on that. That's my position.
Valerie?
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand everybody's frustration with the utility with the water bill. We all have it. But those are things that come from the state. And I heard many people tonight say, the reality of it is, a lot of the issues that we have, and if you're in business, you've got to know, with family leave and some of the things that have come down from the state, we don't have a choice. And a lot of the things that have come down from the state are things like the wastewater and stormwater and those sorts of things. Those are, those are, those are costs that came down because of state regulations. And everybody in here wants our water clean. And everybody in here wants, doesn't want to be flooded. Well, it used to be that we built and we didn't worry about it. They just, houses just got built. There weren't- They just, houses just got built, there weren't regulations, and people got flooded, and people had problems with their water, and suddenly, there were drinking water problems. So lots of regulations came around. We don't like them, but they're there, and that's why. We don't really have a choice to not have, to storm water fees. We don't really have a choice to say we don't want, you know, some of those fees, because those fees are part of the regulations that come down. We have spent ARPA money, which is the money that we got during COVID, to put, so that we didn't have to raise as much money as we thought we had to for the water treatment plant. Anybody who's, has been around this town for the last 10 years knows that our water treatment plant was built in 1930. It is not the greatest choice to have around for a long time without doing something new. So we have been in the process of trying to put together a new water treatment plant for us that is safer, that will last, and in the time that we moved through that process, the break doubled, I mean, the price doubled. And so we are right now waiting for the design to be done, and if we can't afford it, we won't. We'll put a stop to it and wait till we can. But we also know that we're at risk, because our water treatment plant was built in 1930, and you can't build a water treatment plant on top of a water treatment plant. It's just not a possible thing to do, and we've spent many times trying to figure out how to do that. So we have applied for a brick grant, and we are keeping our fingers crossed, because we're in the final stages of finding out whether indeed, we can get $56 million to pay that part that it went up. And if we can do that, we'll move forward, because we won't have to raise any water fees, because we don't want to raise water fees, because we also recognize that that is probably what we're going to have to use, as more than 56 cities in our state have safety, public safety fees on their water bill. They also have park fees on their water bill, none of which you'll see on ours. So we do our parks out of the general fund. We don't have a special tax. If you go to the county, I have to buy a $55 pass so that I can go to a county park. Maybe that's what we should instill, but that's something that we've chosen not to do. Our parks are for the people, or so we thought, and that's, hopefully, will be resolved. But that's, we don't charge people for the parks that comes out of your taxes. So I'm in charge of moving forward with the utility tax and putting it on the water bill. I do have a question, and I have a question, I guess I can ask JC at this point in time, or, because I've talked with Aaron about the fact that right now, we are understaffed, and we would like to bring up our staffing to the level that was at least in 2018, as the problems we've had now, and we would need to hire a few more people to do that. And at what point would we have to have the amount? If we had 15 on the water bill, would that allow us the ability to move forward and hire those people, or not?
So the fee discussion, maybe JC will pull up the spreadsheet. The fee discussion, we'll also, you'll have an opportunity to discuss that at the next agenda item after this.
Okay, that's right. So right now, we're just putting the utility fee in?
Yes.
That's all we're doing at this point in time, is putting it at zero, and then we will talk about that, what that fee would be at the next date?
Yes, the action of this would be for you to consider a food and beverage
Okay.
tax, and then also the establishment of, of the construction of a utility fee for public safety. The actual fee amount would be another item on the agenda later on.
Okay, thank you. So then I'm just going to say that I, similar to DJ, feel at this point in time, I am, I do want to do a utility fee, because I know we need to have police and fire, but I would like to see, because I know we're going to need more revenue, and I would like to see something put on the ballot ourselves, and I know it's too late to get anything on the ballot in May, am I correct? Yes, Augusta, so it would have to be in the ballot in November.
Yeah, we've already missed the May election. You'd want to look at November, and actually, for the success of something this large, to go in front of the voters, you want to give yourself one to two years to provide public outreach. So November of this year may not even be an appropriate election, based on the success of other programs that have passed a big funding mechanism like this.
Okay. I think, because I know, I think I know anyway what Valerie has in mind, and it is important to answer, based on the matrix, like what, what level of utility fee would bring in? Is it 4.8 that you're looking for, Valerie?
According to this, I have 1695 on my matrix, brings in 4.7. And so I was wondering if, you know, because I heard Rob mention 15, I didn't know if 15 would do it, or whether we'd have to go up to 17, so that was kind of my question.
So about 1725 was the previous estimate of $4.8 million, $9, which was also brought up earlier, which is on the agenda later tonight, is about 2.5 million. I do want to remind council that we're still working on budgetary numbers right now at this point, too.
And then you had mentioned earlier, Brian had asked that it's about 3.3 times as much for the businesses in group level A, so they'd be at about $57 if, if the home residential amount was 1725.
Sorry, all this on the fly math. Yeah, 5744.
All right, Rick.
Public safety is very important to me. We need to properly find both fire and police. I'm not going to restate the comments that have been made. I'm supportive of those comments. I'm also supportive of, I feel leveling the field a little bit by having a food and beverage, because I feel it's going to be very impactful if everything's on the utility fee. Thank you.
Further discussion? Anybody ready to make a motion? Valerie?
I'm willing to make a motion to put, to create a public utility fee, which is basically what we're doing right now, is creating the public, the utility tax.
Before that motion's completed, it would be best, because we have two actions in front of you. I would take both actions separately in a motion, so address the utility fee as one, and then address the food and beverage taxes as another motion.
So separate motions?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, that's what I was, that's why I was just saying, I would, I would, I, I don't even know what I'm doing right now, I'm tired. I am proposing a utility tax at this point, so that's all I'm doing at this point.
Well, and so you're
Making a motion to create a public utility tax. No, fee, excuse me, fee, tax, both three words that are not fun. Only three letter words.
I understand that, yeah, the amount could be determined later, but just to be clear, where you're going with this is to create only a utility fee.
Well, that's what I was just told, is to do it, to do one at a time. So that's the one I feel most secure about, so that's the one I'm saying right now, I want to say that I propose that.
Okay, Valerie's motion is to establish a public utility fee. Is there a second? Joel? Okay, discussion on that? Okay, is your, if you're, okay. So I guess he, I guess this is suggesting he wants you to make a motion to, hang on just a second, to adopt the ordinance, which is going to be the, on page 88 or 75, somewhere. It is on page, well, the ordinance would be on 79, and the recommended action is at the bottom of page 76. Okay, question?
No.
Okay. Do you want me to put the motion that was specifically in there? I just want you to confirm that that is your intent with your motion.
I moved to attend the Grants Pass municipal code by adding chapter 8.90, public safety utility fee, and have it read by title only, first reading. That's what I want done.
Okay, seconded by Joel? Is it, are you still seconding that, Joel? Are you still seconding that? Okay. Okay, discussion on that motion. Rick?
I'm in favor of the three-legged stool, so I'm in favor of the utility fee with the rate to determine later this evening. Thank you.
Vanessa?
I also am in support of a diversified revenue source, sources for our public safety services. I'm not in support of the spirit of the motion. I think the spirit of the motion is to have the utility fee shoulder the entire burden, and for commercial A, which is about 90% of our businesses and Grants Pass, would be paying about $684 annually for public safety services. I think that diversifying the revenue sources would take some of that burden off of commercial A and single-family residences. I know that this doesn't seem like an increase to business costs, but it certainly would be far more higher than the other option available. I do support the utility fee as being a supplement, but I don't support it being the entire revenue source.
Joel?
So whether it's a supplement or the primary, we still need to pass the motion, because it'll apply in either case. And I appreciate where Vanessa's coming from, but the motion would apply to either one. The other thing is, as we move forward and actually determine the fee, we can look at category A and break that down, so it's not as impactful on small businesses. We also have a fund that we funded through, not through the general fund, but through another fund, that helps people with their utility bills, so we may need to look at that as well. So we need it the other way.
Brian, then DJ.
Yeah, I just wanted a little clarification, because I've heard a couple times tonight about this commercial category A and trying to stratify that, and I, and I don't know if that's actually viable or not, or if it just sounds good. So JC, Aaron, Augustus, can any of you give us a little bit of commentary on how realistic doing that actually is?
Yeah, I'll try and start. So the, the transportation model is broken up off of the ITE model or manual, that is a very large document that gives a classification and why it's classified, why it is, and why it generates so many, so many trips for certain classifications at square footage. If you are going to deviate away from that, you would need to define what your metrics are, and ergo, you're going to redo a brand-new study potentially as to splitting why commercial A is commercial A, and it wouldn't necessarily be a viable option as far as a short-term solution. If that is council's wish, that will take some time as far as defining what you would like that to be. Other jurisdictions use water meter size as part of the justification, too, because it's a measurable, tangible thing. You would be creating something right now that potentially isn't measurable and tangible as far as how we would be calculating who gets what in commercial A.
Was it?
Can you add a sponsor right there?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes. Go ahead.
So what we're talking about is risk, and it's the council's position to manage risk, and it's staff's position to inform us of that. And so you've informed us of the risk. When I look at the business licenses that come in and the statistics associated with that, when I look at what Jay Merrith was talking about, who held your position before, he thought it was a reasonable amount of risk. I know that you feel like it's not. It is the council's decision to manage that risk. It's not a staff position, and I realize, if we're going to jump over the cliff, like put a warming shelter at the high school for, for a day and take that risk, that's okay, if that's what the council wants to do. But it's our job to manage the risk, and we need to be held accountable for that, and not just have the range of alternatives, not consider that.
Brian, then DJ.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, because it sounds good that you're going to separate that and make it easier on small businesses, but then the money has to come from somewhere else. You know, you can't just take it away from small businesses and then everybody's happy. Someone else is, someone else is going to pay, so that, this, like, this idea is not fully vetted. I'm not saying that it couldn't potentially work, but it is so far away from being vetted right now, that it's very hard to consider it being a reality.
And it won't be vetted unless we say that we want to explore it. And as you look at it, you can have it, the option be money-neutral as well. If you decrease one, you increase the other. So you would decrease the small business, you'd increase the large business, and then you would be money-neutral. There's a lot of different ways you can address that, and if we don't ask the question, we won't get an answer.
DJ.
Sure, this is a tough one for me to vote on. Whereas there is a lot of respect for all the work and other people's opinions, my opinion remains, that I'm passionately opposed to a transactional tax without, without a vote of the people, and as I mentioned before, I just wanted to reiterate that it would be my intention to do what is absolutely necessary, and that's maintenance of current level of service through the utility fee. And I think it's only appropriate to get the approval of the earners to tax their earnings, and I have to, I have to, I have to, I'm going to maintain that foundation that I've reached, and the way in which we are going about it, the utility fee is a motion first, and then a food and beverage tax. This complicates my thought process, just wanted to get that out there.
Rob, are you trying to get in here? No? Okay, I was just hearing phone noise. Somebody else had a hand up? Joel?
You good now?
Oh, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was, wanted to say something. So, you know, I appreciate DJ's consistency, and he's been very consistent on this for many months. I however have to, just, I really struggle with some of the words that he's using, because when he talks about being against any sort of transactional tax, to me, the utility fee is also that, it's just that you're forcing people, forcing the transaction on people. They have no choice, you know? Their water gets shut off. You're forcing them to do business with the city, and you're forcing the transactional tax in the form of a utility fee. So, you know, that's where, you know, I have a hard time actually finding any consistency in that line of thinking. Any way you look at it, it's a transaction of some sort. I also don't have any idea, and I have no idea if this was intentional, or it was just random, but how in the world the utility fee actually got to be discussed before the restaurant tax, even though they started out in the opposite order on our, on our agenda? But, but as Rick said, since I am for, I am likely going to continue to advocate for diversified funding sources, and would be supporting a utility fee along with a restaurant tax, one part of that I have to vote on, and that's the utility fee, and I would, you know, I'll be willing to vote yes on that, up to the point where I feel a restaurant tax would take over. So the amount, I'm sure that Valerie is intending, is very likely not the amount that I would ever vote yes on with utility fee. So, but that said, I am willing to vote yes on the utility fee as being one part of a diversified funding outcome later this evening.
Want to clarify that the ordinance, that the motion is based on, does use the transportation method as the methodology, and so if your intent is to not use that transportation methodology, then we will need to write a different ordinance. Just something to think about as you're voting here. Joel?
So I think that's a discussion for the fee part, and I don't think anybody's talking about throwing out the talking about throwing out the methodology or just amending it. But we can discuss that when we determine fees and whether we want to do that or not. That's not part of this decision.
I've spoken with the city manager here, and JC had already answered that the transportation methodology does use those groupings. And so if you want to make a change from that, it could cause a new study to happen. But this one is based on the previous transportation utility fee study. So if you want to change that methodology, we'll have to do that on another date, and it will require another vote on implementing a utility fee. So just be aware of that. Further discussion on this? We have a motion on the table to amend the municipal code? Who?
Is Dwayne still online?
Dwayne's still online, but he knows how to raise his hand, and he hasn't, so. Anybody else? Brian?
Well, I just wanted to bring up the point that Rob made about how we're addressing these out of order on our agenda. We should be addressing the food and beverage agenda item first, and we're not. So...
They're obviously related. It's two different actions, you know. Valerie made the motion, so we're just going to roll with that. But it doesn't have numbers associated with it.
That's fair. I guess I'll just make one other comment. Putting all of this on the utility fee is nothing, it's nowhere close to any sort of permanent solution to this problem. We've been trying to work on this problem for years, and obviously, we haven't gotten very far. Putting this all on the utility fee is essentially taking all those years of work that we've done and just kick the can down the road a year or two, maybe. Because the reality is, is that public safety costs are still going up twice as fast as revenues. So if we do, I don't know what we're, they're talking about, a $15 or $17 fee this year, next year, expenses are going to go up more than revenues again. So what that looks like is about $4 to $5 to $6 more a year to cover that gap. So that means year two, it's going to be $20. That means year three, it's going to be $25. How, you can't do that very long before it's completely untenable. And so it is not a long-term solution. It's hardly a stop-gap solution. It puts the burden on the smallest number of people. We're a low-income community. It forces people to pay. I cannot support putting it all on the utility bill. I can potentially support putting part of it on there, but not the whole thing.
Valerie, I just wanted to add, and that's part of the reason, is that I heard everybody up here say that they were willing to put part of it or do something with the utility fee. So to me, that was the easiest one to get forward, because we weren't doing it amount. We were just saying, okay, that's an agreed-upon, that that's going to be part of it. So that's why I put that first. It was nothing else to do with it. It was just that I heard from the dais that that was something everybody knew was going to be a part of it. So that was my reason for putting that forward.
Okay. Is there further discussion on this motion? So the motion is to amend the Grants Pass municipal code and add a chapter 8.90, Public Safety Utility Fee, have it read by title-only first reading. Further discussion? All right. Valerie, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes eight to zero. Karen, can you please read that title first?
An ordinance of the Council of the City of Grants Pass amending Grants Pass municipal code by adding chapter 8.90, Public Safety Utility Fee.
Thank you. Vanessa?
I move to amend the Grants Pass municipal code by adding chapter 8.90, Public Safety Utility Fee, and have it read by title only, second reading.
Seconded by Rick. Any need for discussion? Nope. Vanessa, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Rob?
Hello?
Yeah. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We're calling on the vote.
Good job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you voting yes for the second reading?
I'm voting yes.
Okay, thank you.
An ordinance of the Council of the City of Grants Pass amending Grants Pass municipal code by adding chapter 8.90, Public Safety Utility Fee.
All right, thank you. Further discussion on public funding? Public safety funding? Vanessa?
To wrap this up, I would like us to take a vote on the food and beverage tax. So I'll make a motion to amend the Grants Pass municipal code by adding chapter 4.03, Public Safety Food and Beverage Tax, and have it read by title only, first reading.
Is there a second? Seconded by Rick. Discussion on the motion? Joel, amend Valerie?
This is where I think we really need to go to the people for a vote. I'm in favor of the motion, but I also think that the people need to vote on this because it is, almost all the cities have a utility fee. There's not very many cities that have the tax. Ashland voted for the tax. I would vote for it. But I think it needs to go before a vote of the people, and probably will anyway. And so I just trust the people to tell us what they want to do.
Valerie?
And I agree, the same thing. I think the reality of it is, is that everybody agrees we need public safety. Everybody, the more we can get people to understand what the cost is going to be, and where do you want the cost to come from, and how do you want to spread it out, I think that does need to go before the people. So I don't know whether we need to amend this, or whether to have it put on the ballot, or whether we just need to come up with a second, another motion to do that. So that's my question to Augustus, probably.
Do you want to answer?
What?
Yeah. This ordinance, and the motion is to adopt this ordinance, which would implement the tax without a vote.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Brian?
So the motion is for the food and beverage tax to be implemented without a vote of the people, and that's a hard one. And originally, I was against that. However, the city charter, which is approved by the citizens, the citizens voted for our charter, and that charter allows us to take this action to implement it. And it allows the people the recourse to get signatures and do a referendum if they feel that they, that we have not acted appropriately, and that you want to try to repeal whatever action that is, whether it's this or really any action we take. The citizens can try to have a referendum. So either way, I bet the people are going to get to vote on this, whether we take action tonight and there's a referendum, or if it's put on the ballot. So either way, people are going to get to vote on it. But given that the charter gives us authority to take action and that the people approve the charter, I'm okay moving forward with the ordinance or the motion as stated.
Vanessa, then Dwayne.
Yeah, Sarah, this is Rob, if you can hear me.
I can hear you, Rob, but can I go after Dwayne?
Thank you.
It was mentioned that every, a lot of communities across Oregon have utility fees, and that is true. They do assist with public safety fees. The difference between us and those communities is they often have higher property taxes, something that we cannot affect change on. Those are locked in. And my concern is that if there was an interest to put this to the ballot, that that is something that we really should have been moving toward last year or the year before. I have a deep concern that staff cannot even begin working on this until there is a passage. So in the event that we do push it to November, that is another four months out that people will be paying the higher utility fee when we do have the option to spread out the tax burden, among many others. So I do have those concerns there. That's all I have to say at this time.
Dwayne?
Yeah, I'll make it short. We've done a lot of talking tonight. It's 9:40. I'm going to stick to my guns. I want this to go to the people for a vote, and that is very important to me and my constituents and who I've talked to. It's not that I'm against taxing. It's that I want them to weigh in on this. So I'll be a no for this vote. You know, I really want to give everybody kudos for actually speaking their piece tonight and the council. You know, we're all trying to do the best thing possible. And I know we don't all agree, and I know we don't all agree everything there is here, but I think we all have a goal, and I don't hold any of this against anybody. We're trying to do the best thing we can, and I appreciate every counselor for weighing in and being truthful tonight.
Rob?
I have a question for either Aaron or Augustus. So assuming the restaurant tax were to pass tonight, February 21st, we've been assured by people in town that they will do a referendum, and the people will get to vote by people who seem to be motivated to make that happen. I'll take them at their word. They would have 30 days to get the requisite number of signatures. That's March, you know, 20th or 21st or 2nd. And then how quickly after that would a vote happen? Within a month? And the reason I'm going there is that I'd rather know in April, I'd rather be solid on our public, our public safety funding and know where it's coming from by April than have to wait until November for the general election. So by passing it tonight, even if it goes to referendum, we basically know seven months earlier, six to seven months earlier. But I want to make sure, hearing from Aaron or Augustus, what would that timeline be for referendum going to a vote of the people?
So it does sound like there's going to be a split vote with the council, meaning that adoption of this ordinance won't take place until the second reading, two weeks from today. And so the 30-day clock will start on adoption, so the next council meeting. You have 30 days. The petitioners will have 30 days to make the petition to the city and then to collect the requisite number of signatures. That's 10% of voters who voted in the last gubernatorial election.
Actually, Augustus, it will be the amount of registered votes, the day that the petition is filed.
Okay. And that does, I don't know that that goes to a special election.
It does not.
It'll end up going, it'll end up being put on the ballot for the general election, and we have until August 7th to prepare the ballot language and the explanatory statement and all those other documents.
So there'd be no special election?
There will be no special election. It'll go on the 24 general.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Nope. Okay, no further discussion. So the motion was to amend the municipal code and adopt the public safety food and beverage tax and have it read by title only, first reading. Moved by Vanessa. How do you vote?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
You know, this is a hard one, but I'm going to vote no at this point in time.
DJ?
No.
Valerie?
No.
Rob? Oh, sorry, Brian.
Yes.
Rob? We'll go to Dwayne?
No.
Rob, are you out there?
He's still muted.
Is it, what, star seven?
Star six.
Star six to unmute, Rob?
There he is.
Yeah. You can hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you. We're voting on the food and beverage tax proposal. How do you vote?
To be, just to be 100% clear, I'm sorry to have to ask this again, but it would be voted on either way. If it went to a referendum, or if we put it to a vote of the people, it's the general election in November. That was correct? I'm really sorry to have to ask this question at this time.
No, that's correct. So the last day to put something on the ballot for the 24 general election will be August 7th of this year.
No matter how it gets there.
No matter how it gets there.
For that reason, I'm going to vote no.
Motion fails five to three. It failed five to three. Is there further discussion on this? Valerie?
Well, I would like to see it go to the ballot. So I guess we don't need to do anything? We just need to move and get something on the ballot before?
There's nothing we need to do tonight.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So at this point in time, if we choose to put it on the ballot, then we can just choose and have that discussion, and we have to do it by, what did you say, August 7?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If you wanted to make a motion that your intent is to move forward with the ballot, you could do that.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that my intent is to move it forward to an election and have a vote of the people to make sure, to help solidify our public safety moving forward with another, I don't know how to say that exactly, but to have it as a means by which to reduce a utility fee. Because that would be my intent, is if we move forward with a ballot measure, then we do that in, with the ability to reduce the utility fee based upon how much money the food and beverage tax brings in.
All right, is there a second? Seconded by Rick. So discussion on the motion that the council's intent is to move forward with putting a food and beverage tax on the November ballot? Joel?
So I'm a little feeble in my hearing. Could you repeat the motion for me?
It's just a motion of direction, that your direction is to put the food and beverage tax on the November ballot.
Okay, at the 3% rate?
At the 3% rate.
To be determined.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Brian, then Vanessa?
So I find it very interesting that there are certain counselors that feel this needs to go to a vote of the people, but the utility fee, which for all intents and purposes is a tax, you're paying either way, that one they don't feel needs to go to a vote of the people. So it's, it looks very noble to say you want it to go to the vote of the people, but, you know, the utility fee in reality is more of a tax because it's forced. These other options, people have at least a little bit of flexibility. So there's, you know, it's just not, there's not continuity there. But I just wanted to make that comment.
Vanessa, then Dwayne?
I do have an expectation from every counselor that votes yes on this motion to work extraordinarily hard this November to campaign for this. I think that this is the easy way out for this council, just to put the ballot out there and ask that the community makes the right decision. When we witnessed this evening, after talking about this for over three years, people are still telling us to live within our budget, even after we cut more than $4 million from our public safety expenditures. So I have an expectation that the counselors that vote yes will work day and night to educate the community on the importance of this, because just earlier this evening, we gave a life-saving award to an individual who spends their livelihood risking their lives for others. And tonight, we are kicking the can down the road again, and we are not giving any stability to those that would give everything to us.
Dwayne?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be for this, but I would also say that if there's another option that the public comes up with that they want to pass, a fuel tax or cell tax, I'm all for what the people want. So I'll be supportive. And I have been talking to people. I knew that the Chamber of Commerce was not going to go for us a tax. You know, that the Republican Party... You know, I, that the Republican Party, they were not for the tax, but I will continue, I'll make an effort to continue to educate the people that I'm going to have contact with, and tell them, hey, if you don't want the utility fee to stay on, we're going to have to have a tax, and that's why I'll support this moving forward. It's very important. I see the things coming down from the government at Salem, and I know that it's straining our city. I wish I could change that, but I don't have the power here. I'm only one vote, and, you know, the city council can't change it either, but the people can vote for people that will change that stuff, hopefully, in the state, because they're all feeling it. This is not the only city that's feeling the burden.
Valerie?
Yeah, I, I've always been committed to education, and I do believe that, that if we can get out with the information and have the forums, which I have been calling for for years, and saying, as soon as we said the word tax, we would get people angry enough to come in and listen, and here we are. And so now they're here, and now let's say, we make the commitment to put forums on and give you that information, we'll give it to you. But, you know, we, yeah, we need to educate people, and I think that's our role. And I do agree that we need to, and we need to let them know that, you know, the information is out there, is how much cheaper it is for them to pay a tax and have a tax go through as opposed to. But if you force somebody into doing something, they're automatically can get their hackles up, and they're not going to do it. So I believe the fact that it's up to, it's, yeah, it's, it's up to us, and I do believe in our public safety, and maybe that's why I know some people say, well, we shouldn't go as high as we need to go, but that's why I'm willing to go higher, because I do believe in public safety, and I am willing to put the money there. I do know we have ways to put money, take money aside and put it to where it can help people need help. So there are avenues that we can do, and we can help people who need help. So that's important to me, but it's also important for people to know that they have some control, and if they want it to come down, we have avenues for them to get involved with, to learn about it, and come on board and do it. So, but I think that's up to the people to decide, not for us to force it on them.
Okay, so the motion on the table is just to express the council's intent to put a food and beverage tax on the November ballot, and is there any further discussion on that?
Yeah, this is Rob.
Oh, go ahead, Rob. Sorry, I forgot you.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. Yeah, I think that, I mean, well, for me tonight, I would have voted yes on the food and beverage, had that been the, ultimately, the faster option, could we have squared our way, our public safety funding, months quicker, I would have voted for it. Since it's going to be roughly the same amount of time, one of the options that I absolutely will not be shy about educating people about in November is if they don't, you know, if they, if they choose not to fully fund public safety, I won't, I won't be doing it as fully as a, as the utility fee. So, you know, at that point, I think that the option has to be to people also, that they're voting, if they want to, to, you know, put that budget in really, really dire straits. I think that, that's part of the education process. It's not, it's not just why, how we got here, because Vanessa makes a great point. I mean, most of the people tonight, we're still asking how we got here, even though it's been explained many times. But how we got here, the place that we will have gotten in November without fully funding it, would potentially be cut to public safety, and that, that, that really needs to be a take-home message, it seems to me, because no amount of explanation, other than that, are people really likely to hear.
Rick?
Just following up further in Rob's and Valerie's comments, since we would be looking at a November election to know whether we have a food and beverage tax or we don't, I think as we go forward, we need to have adequate funding for public safety now, since that is no longer on the table unless it gets approved later. So I think we're into a corner where we need to show that we are behind public safety and to adequately fund them as time goes on, which, if we're setting a fee tonight, to set it accordingly. Thank you.
Joel?
And so what's more important to me is, first off, I respect the counselors up here, and, and what they've been doing. I respect you people that have stayed through all of this, and I encourage all of you to go out and have the best hamburger and onion rings you can get, and support the restaurants, regardless of whether there's a tax or not, because it's our city, and we need to support each other. So in honor of that, I will go have a hamburger and onion rings tomorrow, and I encourage you to do the same.
Brian?
Thanks for that, Joel. It would have been nice to know before, one minute before the vote, that the referendum was going to be in November. I don't think anyone up here knew that. And so that would have been nice to know, because clearly, that was an important piece of information for the vote.
Further discussion? Okay, so right now, we're just voting on council's intent to move forward with putting a food and beverage tax on the November ballot. And Val, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Vanessa?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
D.J.?
Yep.
And Rob?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to one. Okay, let's tackle, while we're on the subject here, Item D regarding our fee schedule for public safety utility fee.
And you'll see me one more time again later. So the resolution amends the comprehensive fee schedule effective February 22nd, 2024, tomorrow, for some minor adjustments. This resolution also amends, after the previous adoption of the 8.90 ordinance, the comprehensive fee schedule, adding the public safety utility fee effective June 1st, 2024. In relationship to council goals, is to provide cooperative, shared leadership involving council staff and community, and enhance community safety. So there are some minor adjustments. There is kind of some housekeeping here, moving GIS from Building and Planning, the department that it used to reside in, into the Public Works section. There are different rates based on annexation types, and we put more description as far as what those three different types of annexations are in the comprehensive fee schedule. They're listed there. There are other, some, there are other public works minor adjustments that they went back through and looked at the actual costs of some of these items, and they couldn't install them for what we had them previously in the comprehensive fee schedule. So they're asking to make these updates here as well, to at least cover the city's costs. And I'm guessing the, the bell of the ball, the public safety utility fee, here is the potential $9 rate schedule from single-family residential, and as you can see, commercial is $29.97, and so on and so forth. And this would be effective as of June 1st, 2024.